I call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting. Brenda, is any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? Need approval of the May 24, 2012 minutes, or if there's any additions or corrections, need to know at this time.
No.
Motion second to approve the minutes of May 24, 2012, all in favor? Any opposed? Minutes are now official. Council members, Lady Johnson.
Thank you, members of the Commission. I'm just pleased to be here in support of consent item 2012Z 010 TX 001, on-site agricultural sales on behalf of also Council Lady Jacobia Dowell, as well as Councilman Jason Holloman. And I'm just here in support of that, just to make sure that it clears the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Richard.
Hey, how y'all doing today? I appreciate your indulgence in letting me speak first here today. I'm here on Stevens Village East and Stevens Village West, it's 10 and 11B. We've been meeting for months in regards to this development. I think we've had six or seven public meetings. Several neighbors have come out, they've had slight little issues with the development. We've worked with the developers, you know, there's like setbacks off, you know, property line. One example is, you know, at first, we had a townhouse that was six foot off a property line. Developers came back and said, "We'll move it to 20 feet." Then the homeowners came back and said, "We want 30 feet." They compromised and said 30 feet. So, I mean, those are the things that we've tried to do throughout this. I think we've been meeting for over six months now, trying to just let everybody have a say-so that possibly could on this. And I think we've worked out a majority of the issues. This is going to be a great project in our community. It's going to create a tremendous number of jobs out of my area, as well as, this is just a small fraction of this piece of property. You know, I think the overall piece of property is close to 1,000 acres. This is around 100 acres, it's on the Davidson County side. But the beneficial part of this is, most of the retail for this development is on the Davidson County side. The majority of the residential that will cap in 10, 12 years from now, as this grows, will be on the Williamson County side. So normally, we have Davidson County dollars going to Williamson County, and our sales tax dollars go to Williamson County. This is going to be the invert. The retail side's going to be on our side, and we're going to get the tax, sales tax benefits from it, as well as, another portion of this is a NHC facility, you know, least-intrusive thing that could happen around the neighborhood. The developers have worked very hard, I've worked very hard with them, to make sure they leave as many trees as we possibly can along that Highway 100 corridor. This NHC facility is kind of fitting nicely down in a valley between Highway 100 and the Trace Side neighborhood. But we've worked diligently to try to answer as many objections, or more than just objections, just ideas from the neighbors on buffering, landscaping, just whatever we can do to make this fit just perfectly as we can, like a puzzle into this community. And I think we've done it. You know, one issue that keeps coming up over and over and again is traffic. Well, if we stop all development right now in Davidson County along Highway 100, it's not going to solve the traffic problem. They continue to build every day in Fairview and in Dixon that keeps that traffic flowing toward us. So we can't stop everything we're doing in our county just because they want in another county, and the state is not spending this $60 million to fix Highway 100. I've talked with the mayor's office, there's one traffic signal that we're trying to get installed before this project even comes up out of the ground, that will bring an intersection in this project from an F-intersection currently, even if no development takes place, automatically to a B-rated intersection, just with a traffic light. So that's some of the things we're trying to do, as well as the developers are going to be expected to do a number of things with traffic to get this approved. So with that being said, I'm asking for your approval of this tonight. I think it'll be a great addition to our community, and like I said, it'll create jobs, and it'll create opportunities in our community, and just further growth in an area that needs additional retail. And with that, I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Any other councilperson in the audience that I've overlooked? Brenda, any items to be deferred?
There are three items to be deferred. The first is item four, which is on page five of your agenda. It is a text amendment, and it's a request to amend the Metro zoning code to require building signs to be consistent with other signage on the property as to materials, lighting, and size, and the recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item seven, which is on page six, another text amendment. This is a request to amend the Metro zoning code to create a new land use called boat storage, and to allow it as a permitted, by right, use by right in the CS, CA, CF, SCC, SCR, IWD, IR, and IG zoning districts, and permitted with conditions in the CL zoning district. And the recommendation is to defer to the June 28 Planning Commission meeting. And the third item is item 14. It's a request for final plat approval to create five lots on property located at 596 North Dupont Avenue, and the recommendation is to defer to the July 26 Planning Commission meeting, or to disapprove. That's the end.
Thank you, Brenda. Any requests for defer on items four, seven, and 14, I need a motion second.
Motion second.
Motion second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent, Brenda?
Before I read the items on consent, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. This is notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. There'll be no individual public hearing, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is item six, which is on page six, and it's a request to amend various sections of Title 17 of the Metropolitan Code to refine standards of the alternative zoning districts related to building placement and bulk standards, and the recommendation is to approve with amendments. The next item on the consent agenda is item eight. It is a request to amend the Metro zoning code to create a new land use called on-site agricultural sales to be permitted with conditions in the AG and the AR two-way zoning districts, and the staff recommendation is to approve with an amendment. Then the next item is item nine, and it is on page nine, and it is a request to amend the Metro zoning code to modify the downtown national membership of the Historic Zoning Commission, and the staff recommendation is to approve with amendment. And then the next two items on the agenda are 11A and 11B, and this is the Stevens Village West project. It's the portion that does not involve this nursing home or assisted living. And it is a request, 11A, on page seven, is a request to cancel the Westwood Trace PUD located at 8423 Highway 100, which was approved for 37 single-family lots, was zoned RS 30 and CL, and is proposed for specific plan mixed use, and the staff recommendation is to approve. 11B is on page seven as well, it's the Stevens Village West SP. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A, RS 40, RS 30, and CL to specific plan mixed use with a portion of the PUD in it, and it's, which is being proposed to be canceled. And the properties are located at the southeast corner of Highway 100 and Natchez Trace Parkway to permit residential and various non-residential uses. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The next item on the consent agenda is 12A, and it's on page eight of your agenda. This is a request to rezone from the MUN to the OL District for properties located at 673 Old Hickory Boulevard and at Old Hickory Boulevard unnumbered, and the staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item 12B. This is a request to amend a portion of the President's Reserve at Brentwood PUD, and for final approval for property located at 673 Old Hickory Boulevard and Old Hickory Boulevard unnumbered, to permit medical office, general office, and outpatient clinic building uses, where an office building was previously approved, and staff recommends approval with conditions. The next item is item 13 on page eight, and this is a request for final plat approval for properties located on Newton Court, east of Newton Avenue, and the staff recommendation is to approve. And then under the other business items on the agenda on page nine, item 15, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to an additional $5,000 from the Advanced Planning and Research Fund to the Nashville Area MPO to obtain specialist consultant expertise to develop and implement community surveying for the Nashville-Davidson Community General Plan update. The purpose is to ensure all Metro Council and Planning Commission members are surveyed as part of the general plan process, and staff recommends approval. That's the end of the consent.
Thank you, Brenda. The items that have been suggested to be on consent are items six, eight, nine, 11A, 11B, 12A, 12B, 13, and 15.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Before we vote, I've not taken off consent, but I just wanted to ask about the agricultural bill. Does it include honey? Sorry, but it doesn't say it. I just wanted to know.
Brenda, can you answer that?
I believe it includes if the honey's produced on site.
Okay, it's just not called out. Okay, and then would wool fall under the handicrafts?
Jennifer Regan.
Can they do hun?
Can they do what?
Hun?
Yes.
And wool?
If it's being produced on the property, sure.
Under handicrafts?
Sure.
Okay, it just wasn't, there were certain things listed, and those weren't, so I just wanted to be sure they weren't excluded.
It wasn't exclusive.
Okay. That's what I wanted to ask. Thanks.
Motion second to approve these items on consent.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are now approved. For the audience, the items that will be a public hearing and heard by the Commission, voted on by the Commission, be items one, two, three, five A, five B, and 10.
Commissions, this is item number one, Fairlane Park. It's a request for a plat revision to remove the sidewalk requirement from the previously approved plat from July 2011. A sidewalk variance application was submitted with the plat revision, and staff recommends disapproval of the request. The site is located about a half mile to the east of Nolansville Road, and about halfway between Harding Place to the north and Old Hickory Boulevard to the south. Here's the approved but not yet, but not recorded plat, and here's the proposed three-lot subdivision. Again, the main issue here is the sidewalk requirement. This plat shows a sidewalk along the street frontage of two of the three lots as required by the subdivision regulations at the time of this plat approval. If this plat were submitted today, sidewalk would be required along the frontage of all three lots, based on the changes of the subdivision regulations that were approved by the Planning Commission last year. With the variance, the applicant cites two specific reasons for the variance. The first one is that there is no sidewalk in the vicinity of the property. The closest sidewalk is about a half mile to the west along Nolansville Road, and to the south along Tuscalum Road. The second reason is that the slope of the adjacent streets and the ditch along the property frontage would make construction of sidewalk difficult along the property frontage. These elements, the ditch frontage, the slope, and the absence of a sidewalk network are fairly common for residential lots in Davidson County. And the subdivision regulations accommodate these types of conditions by allowing for several options for meeting the sidewalk requirements. And here are those options. For this plat, the subdivision regulations offer four options for meeting sidewalk requirements, and the first two involve the straightforward, the basic solutions of constructing sidewalk or bonding for the construction of sidewalk along a subdivision frontage. But in subdivisions like this one, where there's no adjacent sidewalk network, and where construction of a sidewalk could be expensive, there are other options provided by the subdivision regulations, and that's the second two. Instead of constructing or posting a bond, a payment based on the length of the required sidewalk can be made to the sidewalk fund, which is maintained by Public Works. And the fourth option is to construct sidewalk in another location that could more easily contribute to an existing sidewalk network. The applicant, in this case, in the fourth option, the applicant can find another location nearby that could be less expensive to construct a sidewalk, as long as it extends an existing sidewalk network. And again, these third and fourth options are only available to subdivisions that are not located adjacent to existing sidewalk. With respect to this fourth option, to construct sidewalk off-site, we went, we did a site visit and found a location about a half mile to the south of the proposed subdivision that would more directly contribute to a sidewalk network, and would also likely have lower construction costs. This potential off-site location is located to the south of the proposed subdivision, between Cole Elementary and Pitts Park along Tuscalum Road. And here's a close-up of this area. Cole Elementary is about a few hundred yards to the east. The sidewalk along Tuscalum Road ends at the edge of this multifamily development, and constructing a sidewalk location in front of this development would extend the sidewalk network directly from the Cole Elementary School to a multifamily residential area. Curb and gutter already exist along this road frontage, this portion of road frontage without a sidewalk, which would eliminate a significant part of the construction side, excuse me, which would eliminate a significant part of the construction cost. If the applicant isn't satisfied with this location, he can work with Public Works to find another location within the same pedestrian benefit area that would extend an existing sidewalk. And the pedestrian benefit zone in this portion of the county is pretty large. It stretches from I-24 on the east to I-65 on the west, and from I-440 on the north to the edge of the county on the south. And with the variance request, there are findings that have to be met for a variance of the subdivision regulations. I'll just go quickly through these. The granting of the variance shall not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare. That's part A. Part B is that the conditions of, the conditions that provide the basis for the variance are unique to the property and are not applicable generally to other property. Part C, because the, is, part C is the hardship, there has to be a particular physical condition on the site. And part D is that the variance shall not vary from the provisions of the general plan or constituent elements of the major street, street plan or the zoning code. And the applicant has not shown that all of these findings are met by the proposed variance. The ditch along, the street frontage, and the slope of the surrounding streets are fairly common in Davidson County. Additionally, the sidewalk fund payment and the off-site construction options are provided, are also provided for subdivisions that are not adjacent to existing sidewalk, and that may, and that may make construction, and have frontage that could make construction costly. The variance request also does not explain why the subdivision, why the subdivision should be relieved of all responsibility for the expansion of sidewalk that is required of all similar subdivisions. The sidewalk, the subdivision is also located within a sidewalk priority area due to schools and parks surrounding the site. Here's a map of the surrounding, of the sidewalk priority area. Tuscalum Elementary and Cole Elementary and Pitts Park are close to the subdivision. A sidewalk priority area is an area that has been identified, and the strategic plan for sidewalks and bikeways is having a heightened need for sidewalks. To conclude, staff recommends disapproval of the variance request because the applicant has not shown that the findings for a variance have been met. Additionally, the sidewalk fund and the off-site sidewalk options are available and have not been addressed by the variance request.
Thank you, Greg. Side of this open for public hearing. Applicant, we allowed 10 minutes, and you can reserve 10, two minutes after rebuttal if you'd like.
Appreciate, appreciate you letting me speak. In requesting a variance to the subdivision regulations requiring sidewalks, I appeal to your common sense. I think the true spirit of the subdivision regulations did not include two small lots split off of an existing lot less than one acre in size. The new lots will be for starter homes, not mansions. The regulations require me to build sidewalks in a neighborhood where there will never be sidewalks. The alternate in lieu payment is over $25,000, which is more than 40% of my initial investment in the property. Now, according to Mr. Johnson, just what he said, the new regulations would require me to do all three lots. That just bumps it up even, probably another $10,000. Any sidewalk constructed would, would not allow me to build homes on the proposed lots. These new homes could generate over $2,000 per year, per home, in property taxes for perpetuity. Sidewalks do not generate tax dollars. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I've been there for 18 years. I'm not going anywhere. In my initial hardship application, you know, I stated that the topography of the area of, especially down Fairlane, is more than double the ADA requirements. I mean, it's 11% grade slope. And I've got a picture in front of you right now of, of the sidewalk and curb and gutter reconstruction that was done in January and February. We're going to try to. This is, this was taken in January. Now, no curbs and gutters were even, even constructed for these, you know, there's no sidewalks going in here, ever. There's the finished product. No curbs, sidewalks, and gutters are ever going to be put in this neighborhood. If they were, there would have been curbs and gutters put in as a precursor to sidewalks in the future. My argument is, why wasn't Public Works and Stormwater, why weren't they required to put curbs and gutters in? Yet I'm a taxpaying citizen, and I'm not, I'm supposed to be held to that, to put curbs and gutters in on my property. But they didn't put any in when they did the Stormwater reconstruction. I just, I don't have an answer for that. It's to, to require me to build, or even to build off-site, I'm not going to be able to build on the lots. I mean, this isn't Green Hills, this is South Nashville. I even, I even agreed not to build duplexes. I'm going to do single-family homes, because I don't want duplexes in my neighborhood. But yet, I'm, I'm not going to be able to build houses on these lots. It would generate needed tax dollars if I'm required to do sidewalk construction here or somewhere else. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, is the motion closed the public hearing?
May the close the public hearing.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor? Public hearing's closed. We'll deliberate now. Andre.
I just want to be sure I understood the existing house is staying, and then there are two other lots that are being divided off to build two new houses.
Yes.
I think that's my first question, my main question.
Well, you know, I, I understand the issue. I live in the Creve Hall area myself. I live in South Davidson County. You know, one of the issues in Nashville has been, because we didn't have a comprehensive sidewalk policy, it's led a lot of neighborhoods, you know, earlier neighborhoods off the hook on developing sidewalks. And I think the existing policy is to show that there should really be an emphasis on those particular sidewalks. I understand the development issue, maybe the dollars don't make sense if you have to build, build a sidewalk. You know, me personally, I understand your argument, but, but the sidewalk regulations to me are still a priority.
But this, this is a small, less than an acre lot.
I understand, but that's, I don't know how I'm going to vote yet, but it is important to me, so.
Derek.
I echo Greg's statement, and sidewalks are a priority, a priority to me as a matter of public policy, and I am prepared to accept staff's recommendations.
Derek.
What is the contemplated cost to build the sidewalks in the area near the school? Have you priced out those improvements?
Probably about 15,000 to 20,000.
But less than the contribution you would have to make to the sidewalk fund?
Yes.
And is that not an acceptable alternative?
Well, it's not, because I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a wealthy developer, I'm just a, I do remodeling work, I buy and sell houses every once in a while. This was an opportunity in my neighborhood, we were allowed to do two lots, and then when they said the sidewalks, I was stunned that they would require us to do sidewalks to nowhere. I mean, it's really ridiculous. But building two houses there, the numbers are so tight, that if I have to build, if I have to do sidewalks anywhere, there will be no houses there. I mean, it's, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
You know, I can't, I can't pull a rabbit out of my hat, it's just not, not going to happen.
That's all I've got.
Stuart.
Well, you know, this has a lot of history, this issue does, obviously, and Greg's right. We have a problem a lot of cities don't have, which, who require major subdivisions to have, have sidewalks. We're playing catch-up. Other cities I've lived in have always had sidewalks, as part of the initial cost of a major subdivision. And the reason for that is, is not just because we can do it, but because it does increase mobility, it does increase walkability, it increases neighborhoods, it increases the ability of handicap persons to get around, in general, which doesn't always fit a particular small development, obviously. That's why we have these other options that overall help the situation. I can fully understand why someone who's not a major, large-scale developer can get caught by something like this, and it's our role, I think, to make sure we're not interpreting something the wrong way, or singling out someone for unfair treatment, which I'm convinced by the staff's analysis and discussion that we're not. There are various options. This has been in the subdivision regs for a long time, several years now. Do we, do you remember about how long?
2006.
Okay. 2006. And the, one thing I am a little confused about is, are we, is this for sidewalks dealing with three lots or two?
The sidewalk requirement is, this is still dealing with the subdivision that was approved in July of 2011, and the requirement then was for two lots, so that's still, and that, that approval still stands today, so we're dealing with two lots, two of the three lots.
Okay, that's what I thought. Well, it's, it's, I also know that there's been some discussion about small-scale subdivisions, but there's, that's never been brought to the, to the, to the point of making that change. It's been brought up, the policy discussion has not gone that way, and we have never made that change. And I think to grant this would mean that we would grant everything from now on, and I don't think we can do that.
Hunter.
You know, I think this is sort of the classic case for why, in terms of the physical context of the neighborhood, the ditches, the slope, for why we put the option in there for, to contribute to the sidewalk fund, and the option, or the option of building elsewhere in the area. Remind me, the council does not approve subdivision regulations, and this is, this is straight out of subdivision regulations, so it is Planning Commission that sets these regulations. Well, you said one thing that I, that I think really, you said you want to appeal to our common sense, and my question would be, I mean, I think we don't have a choice right now, given the subdivision regulations, but perhaps we could ask staff to look at the subdivision regs in this particular part of the ordinance, and determine, because I think we've had cases similar to this before, where it's a very small piece of property, zone for single-family, and the cost of sidewalks in an area where there's not sidewalk, you know, does this make- make sense? And I don't know what it is, whether it's the size of a parcel, or number of lots, or what, that perhaps we should look at and see if there's other layers of consideration that could be given in cases like this. Again, today, I don't know that we have a choice, but if we continue to see small subdivisions coming in and saying, look, you know, there's no way I can develop this, no way I can, because we want, we want development, we want to see increased density and so on, but if our regulations are prohibiting that, and there's not some way to figure out how to make it equitable for small projects and large projects, then maybe we should relook at it. So, I don't want to create a huge project necessarily, but if, perhaps that's something that we could get staff to report back to us on and consider. That's all I have.
Judy.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard, heard the applicant, you know, when he talked about there's no way that sidewalks could ever be built there. But I also remember working real hard on those subdivision regulations in 2006, and, you know, and that is the reason why we put in those other alternatives. And I know there's been criticism about putting in sidewalks that lead to nowhere, but the site that the staff has chosen, I think, is a really good site. It's a sidewalk priority area, and I think that pedestrians would benefit from having it there. So, I will be voting for staff's recommendation.
Bill.
I understand the economics of the situation, however, also understand the policy fully, and I think it's very important that we adhere to it. Recently, I was very involved in a survey that was taken in the Donaldson-Hermitage community, and one of the questions was about what are your needs in the community? And sidewalks came back as a very, very high desire, and I think that the neighborhoods, a lot of them that are in those two areas are similar to this neighborhood, too. So, I move that we go with staff recommendation to disapprove.
Second. Got a motion second. I'm going to ask staff, if you recall, Greg, it's probably been about three or four years ago, there was a similar situation on a corner lot in Thompson Lane, just off of Route 24, that we're going to build a beauty shop.
That's the one I wanted to ask about.
It just wasn't feasible to do the sidewalks. Do you know what the disposition of that?
From what I remember, the beauty shop wasn't permitted under the zoning district, so they had to ask for a zone change to permit the use, which would have, I think that, that might have, I think ultimately what happened was the, there was a text amendment to change to allow that beauty salon in its existing zoning district. So, it was never required to do, because, so it ended up being permitted use and wasn't required to do any sort of...
And it was a renovation. It wasn't a new development either, was it?
That's right. It was a renovation as well. That's right.
But regarding the sidewalk issue on that beauty salon, there was a policy that the Planning Commission put into place, but that was for SP zoning, that if there was a reuse of an existing building, then the Planning Commission put in a policy that you would recommend to the council that new sidewalks would not be required on an existing site where they were reusing an existing building, but that only applied to those types of cases, if it was an SP zoning.
Using an existing building, but without resubdivision, I mean, if they used the existing building here.
It was really just, it was a recommendation on the zoning that went to council, and it was a policy that the commission adopted for those specific cases of SP zoning with the reuse of an existing building.
Okay. Got a motion second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
That was one I was going to ask, so I'm glad you brought that up. The other one was just, is more rhetorical because it was raised tonight, was, or maybe there is an answer of what Public Works does for its standards. Is it, is there, when he was saying that, you know, we're not putting in curbs and gutters, so they're clearly not planning for sidewalks, are they then, working in the neighborhood, would they be involved with the sidewalk, curb, and gutter wherever it was put later, somewhere else? Is there, I just thought that was an interesting question. I wanted to see if we had a good answer for it, or if we could get one later.
To my knowledge. If Mr. Hasty would like to answer that question, can.
I'm Charles Hasty. I'm with Metro Public Works, and I think you're questioning the Stormwater work that was done at this location. It was a Stormwater project, to my knowledge. It was not a Public Works. Stormwater is now with Water Services Division. Now, if Public Works was just making a repair to a damaged head wall, we probably would not be putting in any sidewalks or any curb and gutters as a maintenance item to an existing structure. But if it were a totally rebuilt road construction project...
Which that was?
Other than a maintenance job, we probably would be building curb and gutters and sidewalks. I really don't know what that was.
Well, this was, they dug up...
Somebody ask a question, okay?
Please.
Yes.
The only other thought I had, back to Hunter's point of if we were going to think about this in the future, the building permits are sort of calculated based on the value of your project and your cost and your water tap fees based on your usage. If we're, if we start to see lots of small projects that are having struggles with the sidewalk costs, maybe we could come up with some proportionate amount that's relative to the project so that we're not strangling everybody. It's just a thought, and I don't know if that's something we really are going to pursue, if it's worth deferring this so that he could benefit if any decisions we change or not, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a thought.
And I'd like to add to that, that I'm not questioning this gentleman's ability to build the sidewalks or not, but it might be worth looking at other cases where we have denied, on the small subdivision, denied the variance from the sidewalk requirements, and did in fact they end up building anyways, you know. Certainly not questioning that in this case, but is it a real issue, or an issue that comes up regularly and is a problem with the ordinance for small developments or not?
Stuart.
My problem with granting a variance is that there's, it would totally throw out what we have to do it today. But my problem is not with relooking at this, and I think Hunter and others have a very appropriate suggestion to staff. When we put this in, it was to encourage small and large developers to put in sidewalks when there was an event, not to make anybody do it unless they were getting more intense use or there'd been some change. There's a difference between two lots or three lots and an entire large subdivision or entire street. And I do think if the staff could, in all of your spare time, quickly get us a, an analysis of the pros and cons of that, including what Hunter just mentioned in terms of what our experience has been. No one wants extra expense, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, a detriment to the infill that frankly we need to have for sustainability purposes. So, I'm still going to vote against this today, but I do wonder if another option would be a, and I don't want to get up any hopes here, because I think, I don't know, I don't want to prejudge what the staff report might say, but we could defer this if there is to be a, not necessarily a long study, but a quick look at the pros and cons of a change having to do with very, very small subdivision.
Well, and I'm not suggesting exemption necessarily. Because I think everybody contributes, but I just was asking if there's a way to do proportionate, quite a difference.
Let me ask staff, what period of time would you need to come back with a recommendation?
I think we'd need, off the top of my head, two to three months. Does that sound about right, Mr. Lehman?
I think we could do it in that time period. I did want to point out, this case was on the last agenda, and so under the subdivision regulations, you have to act on it within 60 days, otherwise it would basically be deemed approved unless the applicant agrees to a deferral, so.
I have a question.
Sixty days from the last, from the last meeting.
If we approve the motion, Bob, if we approve the motion, is there a time period for which the applicant has to wait before they could come back and ask for the same thing? In other words, is there a difference between a deferral tonight versus a disapproval from the applicant's perspective?
If it's disapproved...
I think, I think we should add that there is already an approved subdivision on this case, and the application here is just for revision to remove the sidewalk requirements. So, if you disapproved this, they'd still have an approved subdivision. They could come back later on and have that approval extended. They could make that request to have that extended, and you could approve it at that point.
But could they ever ask the same, apply for the same thing they're applying for tonight?
This request for the disapproval, the variance request could not be reapplied for if it's disapproved for one year.
Let me ask the applicant. It appears that the commission's going to vote against you. So, we go ahead and vote, or if you would request a deferral for, say, two months, and then we can come back with a...
Time is money. I mean, I...
I understand. It's up to you, you know. You either ask for a deferral or take a vote.
I mean, what are we talking about, deferral-wise? I mean, because I've got until July 8th, 28th to file my plat.
Your options are that the commission will vote, they may vote to go with you, and they may vote against you. I'm not sure how they vote. If they vote against you, then you're stuck with the sidewalks.
Right.
Or you can ask for a deferral and wait for the study to come back, which they think could take two to three months, but we try to push that along in two months if we could, which would bring you back to the second meeting in August, or the first meeting in August.
I mean, what is my, what are my options on deferring the, my plat? See, I've got a...
Could we extend his plat for another few months tonight?
Since this was originally on the May 24th agenda that was adopted, then you have 60 days from May 24th to take action on this unless the applicant defers it. So, 60 days would put you...
Let me ask, Bob, let me interrupt you. Let me ask council, when we, this was deferred on May 24th because of lack of a quorum. Is there anything in our regulations or in, within Metro that this time period, instead of running from May 24th, starts today because it was the commission's action, lack of a quorum that caused this?
No, sir, there's not. Not aware of anything in your rules that would allow that, neither anything in the code that would allow that, just because there wasn't a quorum present.
So, the regulations around the date of the hearing, or the date that it's on an agenda, or the date of the application, what's, I'm trying to understand when the time starts?
I think I can offer some assistance. The problem that we have is that the expiry, the approval for the final plat expires on July 28th, which would mean that we'd have to come back to you on July 26th. An alternative is that you could grant an extension to that approval that you gave last year so that it would come back, it would be extended to when the staff came back with the report. I think that's your concern right now, isn't it?
Yes.
So, we could vote for deferral with the extension of the subdivision then?
But isn't there still the issue of the 60 days? We have to act on this?
Then if, if the applicant agrees to the deferral, then we can do the deferral, and you won't have to worry about that. If he does not agree to a deferral, then you have to take an action tonight.
I'd go with that.
Let me ask that, if the commission's decision is to ask for the gentleman to defer, to agree to a deferral and extend his plat expiration date, that you extend it far enough into the future so that we can get back to you with an analysis, and that if that triggers a change to the subdivision regulations, which I think it would, if some relief were developed, then we would, it's a several-month process, including substantial public notice before the subdivision regulations can be actually amended. So, rather than, if you extend his approved plat for three months, we may get into trouble and not be able to meet his expectations. So, I'd suggest you extend it for more like six months, and we'll hit the middle of that sometime.
If we defer it, you still have the option, although we're waiting on this, you have the option to go ahead with your plat and build the sidewalks.
I'll defer. I mean, I'll give it another shot.
Then is there a motion?
I'll work with you if you work with me.
Somebody needs to pull their last motion, I guess.
What's the date on the expiration of subdivision now?
It's July 28th.
Okay, so that would extend it out six months to bring it to January 28, 2013. So, we need a motion to defer, but to extend the approval of subdivision out to January 28, 2013. Second. All in favor?
I'm sorry. Don't we have a motion already on the table?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, original motion, the second has been withdrawn. The new motion is to, motion second, to defer, but extend the approval of subdivision out to January 28, 2013. All in favor? Louder. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
I'm David Edwards, and I'm presenting items two and three together on the agenda. Both are requests to extend the subdivision performance bond for one year for Cambridge Forest Phase 6 and Phase 10. And this is part of the Cambridge Forest PUD. It's located in the Antioch area, off of Rural Hill Road. This is an aerial showing the Cambridge Forest PUD. And this is a map showing the various phases and sections of Cambridge Forest. The previous phases are complete. The infrastructure has been accepted by Metro, and the bonds have been released, and we will be looking at Phases 6 and 10. These are highlighted in blue. And just a little bit of background information, in order to record a final plat, the construction plans for the required infrastructure must be approved by the reviewing agencies, and this is Metro Public Works, Stormwater, and Water Services. Then the developer would install the required infrastructure and have it accepted by Metro. If the developer chooses not to install all of the required infrastructure and have it accepted by Metro prior to recording the plat, the reviewing departments would determine bond amounts based on the infrastructure shown on the approved construction plans, and the developer would then post a performance bond. And the performance bond consists of two parts. The first part is the performance agreement, which is a signed contract by the developer. It lays out the bond amounts by department and establishes a timeframe for completion, which is what we call a breach date. And then the other part is the security, which can be in the form of a letter of credit, cashier's check, or surety bond. And one thing with letters of credit, they have an expiration date six months past the performance agreement breach date, and this allows time for the developer to submit a bond application for the reviewing departments to get us, to get the planning department current bond amounts, and for the developer to get back with the bank on getting a new or amended letter of credit. And in cases where the developer is seeking a release, it allows some additional time to finish up any remaining infrastructure items prior to the bond release. Bond extensions are typically done administratively. However, we've had some opposition from a homeowner in Phase 6, which is why both of these are on the agenda tonight. With Cambridge Forest Phase 6, the bond was approved on April 13, 2007. The plat was then recorded on April 30, 2007, creating 26 single-family lots. Currently, there are 10 houses built. The performance agreement breach date was April 15, 2012. The letter of credit expires six months after that, on October 15. The current total bond amount is $179,000, made up of Public Works, Stormwater, Water and Sewer. And this is just a map showing Phase 6, and an aerial photograph of Phase 6, and another aerial photograph showing the houses in Phase 6. With Phase 10, the bond was approved on December 4, 2006. The plat was then recorded January 3, 2007, creating 33 single-family lots, and there are nine houses built. The performance agreement breach date was also April 15, and the letter of credit expires on October 15. The bond amount for Phase 10 is $144,500. The bond amount for Phase Ten is $144,500. And here is a map of Phase Ten, and an aerial, this is an older aerial. The building permits are highlighted in red, showing the houses that are built. And here's another aerial photograph from a different angle, showing the houses in Phase Ten. In summary, the planning department has received bond applications for extension for both phases, and those applications have been sent around to the reviewing departments. No departments made a request to call the bonds, and all departments were agreeable to a one-year extension for both phases. Calling the bonds may not result in the infrastructure getting completed more quickly. In the event if the bonds were called, the planning department would send call letters to the bank, and we would also place holds on building permits in both phases. And the planning department would hold the collected funds until the reviewing departments requested those funds to complete the infrastructure, or until a new developer came in and posted a replacement bond. And due to the level of buildout in both phases, neither phases yet reached a majority buildout, the departments have indicated that they would not use the collected funds at this time to complete the infrastructure. So the planning department's recommendation is that the bonds for both Phase Six and Phase Ten be extended for a period of one year.
Thank you, David. The sound is open for public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in support?
My name's Austin Daniel. I'm the developer for Cambridge Forest. And as David has said, I think the real core issue of what's going on is that there's some people that are not happy that we've had a building slowdown, would be a kind word to say, or depression for the last three or four years. So these, this subdivision has not been built out on the schedule that you would normally expect subdivisions to be built out. We have, two of the three builders that started building in here are bankrupt, unfortunate. Some very good people that just didn't make it, and I don't have to tell the commission here that there's been a lot of people that have really been struggling with what's going on in the building industry. What David has indicated to you is that we talked with, in detail, with the different departments, and primarily with Charles Hasty and his staff, concerning what they would and would not allow, based on the policies that they have about allowing the infrastructure to go in place. And Charles said clearly to me that he was not going to recommend that the topping be put down and I be released from that, even if we did do that at this point, because it has not been built out to the point that they need to see that done so that they can go ahead and release it. David also pointed out, even if the bond were called, which doesn't seem like it would make sense, they would just hold the bond, try to find another developer, and still not use the money and put holes in the building lots. So they would just shut the whole process down if the bonds were called. So the issue is that we are trying, normally I've never been, out of 1,000 lots, I've never been to discuss bond applications for extensions. Usually, that's a staff decision. So it's my first time to get to come here and meet everybody and see how this works on this, at this level. So there's 26 lots in Section Six, 10 homes are built out. Staff normally, from Charles Hasty, says they need 75% buildout before they will allow me to go ahead and finish the infrastructure. And the other section, there's 33 lots, and I have been built out. Fortunately, I still own those lots that are unbuilt, which would be about 22 lots that I still own, and we're starting construction in there with two companies. So we're going to be able to do something. In Section Six, which is where the homeowner that's not happy with the slowness of the building process lives, I don't own those lots. They were sold to a builder who went bankrupt, and I can't even build the lot houses in there, because I don't even own the lots. I am the developer, but I can't accelerate the building process, which is what it's going to take for Public Works to approve us moving forward on this. So it's kind of like, I'm not sure exactly, as the developer, what I would be supposed to be doing, which is why staff has recommended approval, because I can't force the building into one of the sections, and we are starting to prepare the building in other sections so we can take the subdivisions to the normal place where they would be, where staff would then normally recommend that we finish the infrastructure. But I guess that's not fast enough for what we need to be doing here. So I'm here to answer questions, and I would like a few minutes if I need to talk about this further at the end.
And you'll be allowed two minutes of rebuttal?
Okay. Are there any questions that I can help with?
Maybe some in a minute, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you. David, could you go back?
Please state your name and address.
Nicole Weatherspoon. I live at 1737 Bridgecrest Drive in Phase Six of the subdivision. I'm also the board president. I'm not just a disgruntled homeowner. I'm here on behalf of the neighbor feedback, the color-coded that you showed, the sections that were released in my two phases. Thank you. The biggest argument that the residents have in this is we understand the process, we understand the buildout. However, you know, how long do we have to wait? As you can see, Phases Six and Ten are in blue, and those bonds go back to 2006, 2007. As homeowners, we're all paying urban service tax rates but not getting the service. We don't get the street maintenance. We pay for our lights. But now we want, excuse me, we want to do a tax increase, and if we're not even getting what we're already paying for. Phase Three, which was accepted by the city from the same developer, began in 2002 and was not completed until 2010. So I don't think we're being unfair in asking for some form of action to be progressed towards this. And the argument of, if we call the bonds, it won't be paved because of buildout. If you look, in order to get to Phase Six, you have to drive directly through Phase Three, which is already Metro property, which would need to be repaved if future construction were to resume anyway. Our biggest argument is, we're paying taxes, but we're not getting the services. We understood under the performance agreement that that was the case, but now that agreement's expired. And we just, you know, like, we do want to see it move forward. I do take exception to Mr. Daniel calling me a disgruntled homeowner. I'm here on behalf of the community because I have the work schedule that can allow me to be here for the 4 o'clock meeting. You know, we've tried to work with him numerous times, and he's been telling me since January of 2011. I'll get that, I'll get that. The manholes that are now covered were not done until right before this meeting. Excuse me. So I think we've been plenty patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Would the applicant like to take his two minutes of rebuttal?
I don't think I need two minutes. Again, it's the process that the staff won't let me do that. I'm happy to do the work. Before the last meeting, when we got together, Ms. Weatherspoon met with Bob and Dave and tried to see what they could work out, and at that point agreed that, well, if we just, they explained the process to them, if we just come in and take the manholes, which, you know, you have to leave the manholes up a little bit in the streets before you finish everything, that that would be acceptable if we just come in and do that. They agreed to that. So I made arrangements to have that done. And the next day, she called back and said that she didn't want to go stand by that decision. But I went ahead and did it anyway. We went ahead and put some paving that Charles and I talked about around those manholes and tried to fix it up so it's as neat as it can be. And I'm with everybody. I'd like to finish it too, but they just won't approve releasing it. And the streets, as you know, while they're in there building houses on those streets, that's when you have the potential to tear up some of the construction process. It's not on existing neighborhoods where there's no construction going on. It's on areas where bulldozers might get off or heavy equipment might damage it. So that's why Charles won't recommend for me to move forward on this. And when he will recommend it, when they will release it, I'd love to go ahead and finish this up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
I'm going to have to excuse myself because of a potential conflict on this.
Okay. Greg?
Well, I, you know, I understand, you know, that the homeowners association would like to see the lots get developed as quickly as possible. But then, you know, with the economic slowdown, there's definitely a logical argument that, you know, there's several situations slowing down the project. And then, you know, it makes sense that you shouldn't pave the final paving until, you know, a majority of the houses get finished on the property. So, you know, I'm going to vote to, with staff recommendation.
Andre?
I just wanted to ask a question that came up in the letter about the association dues. Is that, did you all discuss that at all, in staff, about whether everybody's contributing equally on all these parcels to help pay for some of these costs?
No, I mean, that's something you might be able to ask the developer on. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I guess that was just a question that was raised. Yeah, can you answer that? There was a question raised about whether the developer were paying the association dues owning 25 parcels into the fee to help cover some of the fees that the homeowners who are living there already are paying.
What the homeowners pay is just mowing of the common areas. That's what they pay. There is no pool, there's nothing else except the mowing of the common areas.
Thank you.
Stuart?
I can imagine that we would all be annoyed if we lived on, right in this area. I don't see a very good outcome if we, if we don't extend. I really don't. I don't know how that works. And maybe I just, we haven't seen a lot of these. I'd like to ask staff, if in fact we don't extend and the bonds are called, what do you think the likeliest outcome is? And when?
Well, if the bonds were called, we would, again, send a call letter to the bank and collect on the letters of credit. And all the reviewing departments have indicated that they would not want to use the funds to finish the infrastructure at this time. However, if we do call the bonds, we're going to put holds on the building permits. So no additional houses will be built, and the other departments want to see additional houses be built until the final infrastructure is put in. So we would be at a standstill.
Which does indicate that our whole system of these bonds as a method of ensuring completion doesn't work at all. So I can see why nobody out there is happy, either the developer or the neighbors. Having clarified that...
You did.
Well, I guess I'll just follow up that with a question to staff as to how the regulations are established for these bonds, because I mean, is that a planning commission? Is that completely a planning commission policy?
They're enshrined in your subdivision regulations, which the planning commission approves.
Judy? Phil?
Well, I think we're very close to a perfect catch-22 situation here. Frankly, I think that the actions that would result if we don't extend this are worse than if we do. So I move approval of the staff's recommendation.
Motion second. Approval of staff recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for items 5A and 5B.
This case is a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan's land use policy for property on Lucas Lane. It also has an accompanying rezoning request. Here you see the proposed amendment area outlined in black. It's approximately 32 acres, east of I-65, south of Trinity Lane, and west of Dickerson Pike. The property is part of a larger area of neighborhood urban policy that's shown in orange, which encourages a mixture of compatible uses with a variety of housing types. There's also a stream that runs through the property. The applicant is requesting the policy be changed to District Industrial, a CCM policy, to allow a pull-apart auto recycling center. You can also see the nearby residential policies and the center policy along Dickerson Pike, which also supports residential uses. Here the proposed amendment area is outlined in red. Currently, the property is being used to store truck trailers. However, adjacent to the property is a large mobile home park with over 150 homes that has recently been renovated. In addition, an elementary school is also adjacent. Nearby, MDHA is currently building a 72-unit housing development. There are numerous businesses along Dickerson Pike and a variety of residential uses in the surrounding area, as well as businesses along Trinity Lane. New MTA bus shelters will soon be constructed along Dickerson Pike, near the mobile home park and new housing. These are all investments being made to the neighborhood in the general direction supported by the existing neighborhood urban policy. In addition, the area is a gateway into the neighborhood, and the applicant's property is highly visible from the I-65 corridor. The intent of neighborhood urban policy and the community's vision for this area is to transition to a more mixed-use pattern that's more respectful of the surrounding residential development, and one that encourages revitalization of businesses along Dickerson Pike. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. Approval of this policy amendment would suggest that continued and intensified industrial-type uses are appropriate, and this is a departure from the vision, which is to move the community towards more mixed use.
Item 5B is the associated zone change that goes along with the plan amendment for East Nashville, which was just described by Anita. Again, this is the property, consists of two properties. It is currently being used for truck storage. Staff is recommending disapproval of the SP zoning. The existing zoning is industrial warehousing and distribution, which is intended for those purposes. It's one of the lighter industrial uses in the zoning code. The proposed zoning is specific plan industrial, which is for auto salvage, which is one of the higher-intensity uses in the zoning code, which would be fall under like heavy Some more views of the site. Again, this is in the East Nashville Community Plan. The policy is neighborhood urban. Staff is recommending disapproval of the policy amendment. This is the site plan. It calls for an auto salvage facility, more specifically, a pull-apart. It consists of a 3,600-square-foot retail center, has a 1,500-square-foot maintenance facility. I'll explain to you how this kind of works after we kind of go over what's on the site. This is a storage area where cars will be stored on-site. It will have a little over 1,684 slips for individual cars. Cars will be parked side by side, one high, so they won't be stacked. The plan calls for a concrete wall between the height of six and eight feet along Interstate 65, along that boundary. In the area that it will run along is indicated in red. The rest of the property will have a metal fence between six and eight feet tall, which will run along the boundary indicated in red. There's also proposing a D landscape buffer yard, which will be between 50 and 30 foot So now how it works. Automobiles are brought into the facility. I'm not quite sure how they get them. They get them from different sources, but they come into the facility, they are inspected in the maintenance facility, and the fluids and other hazardous materials are taken out and recycled off-site. The cars are then placed on the lot, where then consumers can come in, go in, they will ask for a certain car, a certain part, they will walk in, they'll tell them where it is, they'll go out there and pull the part themselves, come back to the retail center and pay for it. After so many days, cars are taken off the lot and crushed at the maintenance facility, where they will be then transported off-site for recycling. And to conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval, as the request is not consistent with the land use policy. If the commission approves the land use policy and/or approves the SP, then staff recommends approval with conditions of the SP and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Jason. The sound is open for public hearing. Advocate can be allowed two minutes. You can reserve two minutes of that for rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you very much. My name's Bill Lockwood. I'm with the firm of Barge Wagner, Sunra and Cannon. I'm representing LKQ and the existing landowner.
Let me make this announcement. Let me make this announcement, start his time back over. We'll, public can make comments on both of these, but the Commissioners will vote on them separately. So, start your time over again.
Okay, thank you. Do I get 10 minutes for each one?
No.
Okay. But, but very quickly, I wanted to also address from the policy standpoint that this site really is separate from a lot of the other areas and really doesn't lend itself to the policy as stated by the, by the staff. This site is existing IWD, and as you can see from the, from the plan that you've got, can you go back to the, Jason, can you go back to the overall plan? But anyway. The site is away from Trinity Lane, we've got I-65, Trinity Lane, Lucas Lane is the access to. The site is about 68 feet, or 48 feet above the interstate. It's 24 feet above Lucas Lane. And you also have, up to the top of the trailer park is about 48 feet. And you have 44 feet to the school. So there, from a grade standpoint, it is very separated. You start looking at the contours, this is about 484, 486, is this site. And you've got, here, you're down below that, 48 feet. You're about 62 feet down to the stream area, about 38 feet to the interstate. You're about 44 feet up to the playground area for the school, and your house is about 40, but you have about 30 feet really roughly up to where the first trailer park, except for the trailers that are down in this low area. So, you know, we are proposing a screen around the whole property for security and for screening purposes, so that it is, you know, for protection of the site and doesn't allow people coming in and out of the site. You know, so the existing, you know, the existing facility right now is being used as a motor freight trailer park, which operates pretty much for a pretty good bit of time, you know, 24/7. They come in at 3:00 and start the tractors up. We are proposing a time limit on our project is from, we would prefer 7 to, you know, 9 o'clock during the summertime, and then, but during the wintertime, you know, is dark. We're not going to allow people out in the site. We're not going to have lights out there. Another thing that from, from a physical standpoint is this site is a large fill area. There's, it's a very deep fill. Therefore, a large construction is going to have to have a lot of foundation and other things that are going to make it very difficult to meet what the staff or what the commission is using for a policy. We think that, you know, with our request, you know, we're requesting this to be a special policy, you know, tying it to the SP. We think that this use is a better use of the property and less impactful to the existing residents than what's out there today or what's permitted under IWD with the interstate and the other. So we, we think that, you know, with that, this, this project would be better served. Also, the character of the area, you have, right next to the trailer park, you have a scrapyard here, which is a demolition scrapyard. As you can see, I guess from this point, you can see that that's a demolition scrapyard now, right next to the residential, you've got the school on this side. You've got a truck stop here, motel, warehouse, another motel, the Dickerson Road. We have no access to Dickerson Road, so we have very little impact. Plus, we are really, from a grade standpoint, separated from access to Dickerson Road. So there, there is some characteristics to that, that kind of case. So we would ask that you approve that.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barber. I reside at, in Prospect, Tennessee. I work on the acquisition and development team for the company that's proposing this. It's called LKQ Corporation. We are a publicly traded company, listed on the NASDAQ under LKQ. We have approximately 19,000 employees. Our yearly sales are between $3 and $4 billion. We're located in Canada, United States, South America, and also in the United Kingdom. We have created over 500 jobs in the state of Tennessee. When we went, when our corporation decided to centralize our accounting offices, we chose the Nashville area as that spot. We located in the Grassmere Park with the cooperation of the Economic Development Committees and also with the mayor's office. And under that, we proposed that we would attempt to locate as many of our different divisions in this area as possible, and this is one of them. I report as far as the, in acquisition and development, I report directly to the chairman of the board. So, we've been embraced by other communities, other governments. We just had a, embraced by a local community, Chattanooga, and through that, their estimation is the model site would be, would produce about $225,000 in sales tax revenue, plus increased property taxes for their city. And their, their site will actually be a little smaller than this site. So with that being said, I also have some, some news articles for staff to pass out as Sean continues. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street, representing LKQ. I'm the last speaker as an applicant representative. The existing zoning on this property is industrial, industrial IWD. It does, it is not consistent with the existing policy, which is the neighborhood urban policy. The existing use of the property, the motor freight yard that's been there since at least 2003, is not consistent with the present policy. The range of available land uses permitted in the IWD district, the industrial uses, are not contemplated by the present policy. And when you look at the surrounding uses, the salvage yard next door, the truck stop, the warehouse, and other uses that are illustrated on this aerial photo, those uses are not contemplated or consistent with the present NU land use policy. We submit that if this commission had the facts before them in 2006, of a zoom-in study of this present site and the surrounding conditions, the changes in elevation, changes in topography, these other uses, if you'd had that information in 2006, we submit that you probably would not have placed NU policy on this portion of the interchange corridor with 65. This is a one-way-in, one-way-out access via Lucas Lane. LKQ is going to build a cul-de-sac on the end of Lucas Lane that presently does not exist. We think the special policy provisions of your community character manual could be employed here to address any concerns, as I've illustrated in my letter to you. Any unique development concerns or issues that are raised about this development, you have the wherewithal to address that. Jobs, sales tax, property tax, these are issues that LKQ brings to the table. It's a model of best practices in Chattanooga. They can coexist in relative proximity to existing residential properties, and, and they will do so at this location. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve the remaining time for rebuttal.
Thank you. You've got a minute 22.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in support?
Is it all? I apologize for kind of breaking from the program here, but I am Councilman Scott Davis of the 5th District here in Metro Nashville, Davidson County. I think both sides of this issue, they have both well-meaning intentions. We have a freight yard of trucks back there. We have truckers coming in 24 hours a day. And the company has met with merchants, they've met with the trailer park. We had a meeting at a Dickerson Road merchants' meetings twice, and several other small meetings. The company went far and beyond the call of duty. And I think both sides will admit that. But one thing that really troubles me right now, not just the phone calls I'm getting from the citizens of the trailer park, but the misguided phone calls. "Mr. Davis, please do not bring a junkyard to my, to back of my house." "Mr. Davis, the junkyard will stir up dust, and the junkyard, the cars are going to be being crushed all night long, Mr. Davis." That concerns me. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, I would not bring a junkyard to the back of your house. This is not a junkyard. I want to do a comparison. Tom Negri, Lowe's Vanderbilt Hotel. I want to bring a hotel, a nice luxury hotel, to your district. I don't know what a hotel looks like. So let's go over here to Appalini Inn and do a comparison to Lowe's Vanderbilt. People were taken to a junkyard to do a comparison, and that's unfair. I mean, regardless if you're for this or against this, we cannot compare Burger King to Ruth Chris. I'm sorry. You know, both places have their meaning. Unfortunately, I eat more at Burger King than Ruth Chris, but I can't sit here and let my citizens be misguided. LKQ is a great company. And I'm not just saying that because I want them to come here and employ my, my citizens. I do want them to do that, but I already have people that live in my district that are employees of this company. "Mr. Davis, please let people know, this is not a junkyard." Will you call AutoZone a junkyard? And as far as noise, I don't know the technical term for the name of the machine, I'm not in that business, but the machine, as one, as, as someone will explain to you, sounds like you crushing a water bottle. They don't compress the cars, so it's a loud noise. And plus, where that will be taking place is going to be a building farthest away from the trailer park. Now, we talk about Schwab School. I spoke with the principal of that school. She is not speaking in behalf of Metro Public Schools, number one, and she has no really dog in the fight because she's resigning. Her issue with the trailer park is that people cut through to get to the school, which she's okay with playing on the playground after hours and during the summertime. She loves the kids and the people over there. Her issue is every, every place has its unsavory citizens. You know, I have them in my neighborhood, everybody has them in their neighborhood. Some people go in the back of the school and do drugs. There's a homeless encampment back there, which Metro Police has been great helping us, you know, find them another place to live. Those are their concerns, not LKQ. And I just want to make that clear. You're going to hear Schwab School. You heard about MDHA. Joe Kane climbed on the roof of that building. I want to give Joe Kane a big thumbs up because he climbed up there trying to find and look for those trailers, or where the site would be. He could not see it. This is off of Lucas, not on Dickerson Road. Let's get that clear. And once again, this is not a junkyard. I, I'm going to go to the extent to prove how good this company, I want to do something that no other council person has done. I have talked to the company, out of my own pocket, not out of the city's budget at all. I want to charter a bus and take them, I want to buy lunch too, because it's going to be a two-hour drive to their closest facility to do the comparison. I want them to run their car compressor, so they can hear it. They're going to pave the area, so there's no more dust. The truckers come in 24 hours a day off of Dickerson Road. Now, I could talk about truckers. My cousin is a trucker. And he tells you about the area, when he comes there to transfer a load, some of his other buddies get on the call, and they're wanting to know about certain other not-so-cool activities, because we all want to fight crime in the area. And you'll decrease crime because there'll be no more of those 2% bad truckers that are picking up certain ladies off of Dickerson Road and behind that motel. And I'm just going to say it, I live across the street from a real junkyard. I live across the street from Hilltop Salvage. They're crushing cars, they're doing all kinds of stuff. They don't want LKQ to come, because this is how you're supposed to do this kind of business. You're not supposed to make a lot of noise. You're not supposed to have junky cars sitting out there. You're not supposed to have dust going everywhere, because you're supposed to pave it. You're supposed to do the crushing indoors on a machine that, that makes, that makes just a popping noise. And you're supposed to drain the fluids and then ship them somewhere else to be recycled. You're not supposed to do it right there in the ground. I feel like the people in my district have been misled. Not intentionally, but their closest comparison is a Hilltop Salvage or somewhere else. And that's not their fault. But it's up to me as their councilman to give them a good comparison. If you do not have a Ruth Chris in your town, you would think that it's another small-time burger joint, because they have great hamburgers, but they have, you know, what we all like, steak, shrimp, and that's the only comparison that, you know, that I could just think that everyone may know of. Or, you know, a fancy hotel comparing it to the Appalini Inn motel, that's a travesty. And we cannot do that. And I just want the Planning Commission, however you vote, to make a decision today for this. They've been through several meetings. They've talked to all the players. And I understand, I respect the trailer park's, you know, decision to change their mind. I respect that. I change my mind all the time. I'm not even going to lie. But, give us a fair assessment. Don't call this a junkyard, because you cannot compare it. And I wish we had time to show you the video that a lot of us have seen about LQK, how they do business, to, to kind of clarify that. But, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to bring a junkyard to your dis, to your area. I really don't. But, give it a chance. Go and see their facility. Not on your dime, not on the trailer park's dime, but on this poor public service's dime. And, and I'm willing to do that. And I'm sorry to get off the mic a little bit, but this is how important it is to me. Because you're calling me and telling me that I'm bringing a junkyard, they're bringing a junkyard. It's an unfair assessment to make. And, and that's all. I'm going to ask for some time at the end, so I apologize for being long-winded, but thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
My name is Hi Lewis. I'm a commercial real estate broker with the Charles Hawkins Real Estate Company. I'm the real estate agent representing the owner of the property, Mr. Jack Jenkins. The purpose of me coming today to speak is to kind of talk about more of a historical use of the property and give you a perspective of what, over the, I guess, over the past maybe three to four years, as we have marketed the property, what kind of prospects we've seen come expressing interest in the property. Mr. Jenkins improved the site in 2002-ish to its current state. He did that for Comtrack, one of the existing tenants. Currently, there are two tenants on the site. It's Comtrack and Warner Enterprises. Between the two of them, I think it's close to 300 trailers at any given time that are, that are located on the site. In regards to a marketing plan and who we have heard from and what we've heard the market indicate the uses of the property to be over the past few years, I've got, I went back in my files, I've got a list of about 11 companies that have expressed an interest. In 2007, Mobile Mini, that's a, you know, the, the portable mobile trailers, they were looking for a 10-acre site for a drop yard. Falcon Transportation, a trucking company, in June 2008. June 2008, it was American Trucking Company, similar to Comtrack. January 2009, there was a broker that had a trailer parking requirement. March of 2009, there was a trash company that was looking to have a drop yard for their trash vehicles. 2009, it was a company called PacBan, it's similar to Pods. June of 2009, there was another broker that had a trailer requirement. June of 2009, Allied Waste had a requirement. Nationwide Trucking was in January 2010. In August of 2010, there was a broker for trailer parking. And in 2010, there was a dumpster drops company that was looking to use it as a drop, as a drop site.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support, please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Veronica Stevenson, and I'm an employee of LKQ. And I work, well, I live in District 5, and I think this would benefit East Nashville a lot. So I just wanted to give my two cents and add that to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
They put in new water lines that have been needed for 50 years at least, new streets, asphalt, man, great, just at a potholy blacktop. But I've lived in here for 25 years, and the property I live on is a good lot. I love it back there in the corner where it was quiet. We'd like it to remain quiet. Now, they parked some trailers down there. It's a drop yard is all this place is right now. Drivers come in there, they drop a trailer, they pop the fifth wheels, they're out of there, they're gone. The trailer may sit there a week before somebody else comes to pick it up to deliver it or take it back to the company to refit it. It's what they call a marshalling yard. I know I've worked around them. I was a tow truck driver and many years here in Nashville. I worked at West Nashville, I worked at Hillwood, and Moorehalton, and none, I worked at A.B. Collier. I drove the little ones, I drove the big ones. I drove cars, trucks, you name it, in and out of these salvage yards and places, all these wrecker yards, and there ain't nothing any nastier or smellier than where you've got a bunch of old cars and trucks parked. And I mean, granted, they may going to be set everything up on these risers where people can get under the cars easy and pull the parts. Well, that's nice if you've got to take a place where it's going to be safe. Here's a, the OSHA regional news at least, in Jenkinsburg, Georgia, employee working under a riser pulling parts. Car falls on him, breaks his hip, and then messes up his back and all that. And then there's another one here, and...
Need to summarize if you would, please.
Arkansas, they were supposed to keep a running list of these mercury switches, which mercury is one of the worst things it can get in our atmosphere. It can tell when you put a drop in a swimming boot, you got to dump the swimming boot. Nothing worse than mercury. So you can't eat fish anymore if you get it in the river delays because they're mercury contaminated.
Thank you, sir.
But anyhow.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes?
Expired. Two minutes, yes.
That's it. Well, here's some letters here that they want each one of y'all to have a copy of.
If you're giving the staff of...
And then you all can read that yourself. Look, can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
I just hope, now, they say they're going to put this outer wall around there, but there's going to be an electric fence on the inside.
Okay.
I don't know if you remember when you were a boy or not.
Sir...
I do. Well, I'm not, you said I could say one more thing. I'm just trying to say, that electric fence, I wouldn't want it to be around in a residential area. How many of these little boys going to climb that outer wall and hit that?
Okay.
Bart Durner's going to be chasing no gun case to the trailer parkers.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Garrison, and I'm here with Waller-Lanston on behalf of our client, UMH. UMH is the owner of the manufactured housing community that you've heard a little bit about. They own approximately 25 acres of property adjacent to this facility, and they're strongly opposed to this community plan amendment and the SP. They're opposed for the basic policy reason that they came in and purchased this property in 2011. They've expended almost $700,000 improving the community and improving the property, and they rely directly on the community plan. They opened up the community plan and they looked at it, and they said this community plan is designed to instruct us as to where to invest, and this community plan calls for residential uses in the area. That's why they invested in the property, they relied on that community plan, and that's the whole point of the community plan. The community plans are supposed to be used because they express what the community wants to see in the future. It's a policy decision, and in this case, the community clearly spoke. They wanted to see residential uses or lower density, less intensive uses than what's currently being proposed. Manufacturing and, you know, heavy industrial uses, which is what you're seeing here, a heavy industrial use, is diametrically opposed to what the community originally wanted to see in this area. After 18 community meetings, I would hope that this community plan could stand as it is. It's a good policy. It's good for Nashville, and it's good for developers, and it's good for businesses throughout the community to know that they can rely on these community plans because they reflect what the community wants to see. Only in certain limited circumstances should community plans be revised and amended, and we would respectfully submit that this is not one of those circumstances. This use could go anywhere else in Nashville, not on, you know, a corridor that's very important to the community, that's very important to East Nashville, and that's slated for redevelopment. Respectfully, you know, we've also heard about the fact that this is, you know, a first-rate top facility that everyone should see. We have actually seen it. We've gone out to Centennial Boulevard, and there's a similar facility there. We'd ask that you go out and see the same thing. And in conclusion, we would ask that you oppose this community plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak, please line up behind each other at the microphone.
My name's Tony Klaus, and I own property located on Dickerson Road. And there's no question about the property is not going to impact Dickerson Road, but over the last several years, I've had several people that, a friend of mine that owned businesses on Dickerson Road, that's been impacted by the overlays by MDHA. And they've always been told that that's going to help the community make it better, going to take and make things a lot better. I own a mobile home park. There's nothing wrong with the mobile home parks. The thing we got here is, we got a situation is, we've got a lot of non-conforming pieces of property due to the years of changes, and if that property that we're discussing now, if you were going to go build something, it'd fall under IG because heavily industrial. And I just think you need to think about when you vote on this, are we going to continue on setting non-conforming? The mobile home park that's in question, it's non-conforming. If you look at the zoning issue out in that area, it's such a mixed use that it's hard to tell what you're getting when you buy it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Claudia Tamer, and I live in that trailer park. I have copies of letters that you guys didn't yet, so pass them on. Shady Hills has been at that location for over 50 years. UMH just bought them out, and they've done a real nice job of fixing them up. And I'm so glad that he brought up the endorsement from Chattanooga. I have a letter from the South Side Chattanooga Oak Hills Neighborhood Association, which is being passed. It's addressed to Mr. Jim McLean. McLean, pardon me. Dear Chairman McLean, my name is Terry McCullough. I am the president of the South Side Chattanooga Oak Hills Neighborhood Association, which is located at the Alton Park of Chattanooga. I am proud to represent many hard-working families in this community. I was surprised to read in a June 12 letter from Dan Thornton, Director of General Services for the City of Chattanooga, which was addressed to the Nashville Planning Commission. In the letter, Mr. Thornton states that LKQ has been warmly embraced by the city and community leaders for locating a self-service auto parts retail facility in a mixed-use area, Alton Park, containing residences coexisting with commercial and industrial businesses. These remarks have no basis in reality. In my capacity as president of a local neighborhood organization, I am constantly in contact with actual members of the Alton Park community, and I can assure you that nobody in this area, and certainly no community leaders, have, as Mr. Thornton described, warmly embraced LKQ. In fact, there is a significant level of concern within the community about this company.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Two minutes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, you got the letters.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We'll pull this public here.
Well, we've got a minute and 22 seconds left for rebuttal if you'd like to use that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I'll need all that time. I, for one, visited the trailer park, mobile home park next door. We met with the general manager on site. We met with the engineer out of Morgantown, West Virginia, who flew in to meet with us, met with another official from the corporate headquarters, which I believe is New Jersey. One of their concerns was that there's presently stormwater draining from the motor freight yard site onto the trailer park, mobile home park. Our engineers are fixing that situation. Presently, there's only a partial detention pond on the property. We're going to finish that out and create the two that are required on the property. Their investing, as was heard, almost twice as much as the owners of the mobile home park have invested in their property. And importantly, they invested, the mobile home park invested in their property knowing that about 1,000 feet of their common boundary borders the motor freight yard and the demolition salvage yard. So they made that knowing that those uses were present and the zoning was already there. The Centennial Boulevard example, that's not an LKQ site, and I want to repeat that. LKQ does not own, control, participate in any way in any other facility in Davison County. Their closest retail facility that we're talking about is Huntsville, Alabama, and there's another one in Memphis. So we're happy to take folks from the mobile home park on a tour of the Huntsville site, and we intend to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion to second the closing of the public hearing. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, we'll discuss and vote on item 5A first. Andre.
I'd rather wait.
Greg?
Hello. I'm going to pass.
Anybody want to speak?
I'll speak. I'll speak.
You know, I know that staff has indicated that this is not consistent with the policy,
and I can understand and respect staff's recommendations on that, but I'm still not really sure what this is and its impact. If I have to go based upon what I know right now, and I'm inclined to vote with staff's recommendations, but I think the council member has had an impassioned plea where he shared with us that this is not your traditional or our traditional understanding of some sort of junkyard. And I guess the bottom line from my perspective is, is that if I have to vote on this today, I will vote with the staff's recommendations until I have a better grasp of what we're talking about, because I too am not very sure as to what this is and the impact it will have on the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Jeff?
Does the applicant have pictures of existing facilities as opposed to pretty site plans? I mean, are there...
I just wanted to know whether there's a... Okay. You have one where the cars are stored on site?
Okay, what else were the passengers...
But this is the car. I guess we've all driven by this site for years. And let me ask a technical question. If we support the staff on 5A and we don't change the policy and the plan, then 5B is moot?
We would advise you to make the policy and the zoning, your zoning recommendation, consistent. I'm not saying you couldn't turn down the policy and approve the zoning, but that would not be something we advise.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Story?
I suppose for me, this is fairly clear-cut, actually, and it may be just my oversimplified way of looking at it, but we have an existing zoning that is IWD, which this doesn't fit, or else they wouldn't be here. They'd be building it. They need a change, and the change that they want is to go to a more high-intensity use than what's been on there, because IWD is not as intense, is that...
It's...
Right, IG is what I heard earlier. So that's the case, where we're trying to do something, the applicants are trying to do something they can't do now, and even though IWD is not consistent with the fairly new community plan, it still controls over the community plan if it's exactly what's there, if it's the current zoning. They can use the current zoning to what they want. But since it's not, it seems like as a planning function, what the council does, I suppose, is a different matter that might take into account what we do. Sometimes it seems to, and many times they don't. But from a planning function, we've got a plan. We've got a very detailed plan that had full involvement of our commission staff and a fair amount of involvement, I guess, from the community. And it wasn't that old. I don't see how we can ever look a property owner like the new owners of this mobile home park in the eye again if we so quickly reverse what we just did for a more intense use. I can't support this, and what the council does is there.
Hunter.
I guess there was one comment by a member of the applicant team that suggested that perhaps a mistake was made in the community plan process, which has happened before, or something was overlooked. So I guess, and I didn't necessarily, I don't think we heard from any community members that participated in that process, so I guess I'd like to ask the staff if this area was deliberately discussed during the community planning process.
Yes, it's been...
Can I just add that question, because one of the parts of that was the issue of the fill that it would allow, what the site physically would allow? If it's a deep, there was a suggestion there was a deep fill? So my question to add to Hunter's, when we were looking at it as this community plan, was the fact that it was fill considered in what could be put there eventually.
Yes, Hunter, planning commissioner goes back to, I think, 1999, when we first started planning work with the community, and that was the Dickerson Road corridor, and looking at the direction they wanted to take and change. And then the East Nashville Community Plan was updated in 2005, 2006, but since then, I've kept in close contact with the Dickerson Road merchants in various communities along there, and they feel that that policy is the direction to go and that this site, over time, could conform to some aspect of the neighborhood urban policy. So it was looked at in detail.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Judy?
Thank you. I'm well aware of the investment that has been made to revitalize this community. I know that there are a lot of folk out there who could have spoke tonight but didn't, who are against this. If you could just stand and let us see who you are quietly. that participated in that process, so I guess I'd like to ask the staff if this area was deliberately discussed during the community planning process.
Yes, it's been...
Can I just add that question? Because one of the parts of that was the issue of the fill that it would allow, what the site physically would allow. If it's a deep, there was a suggestion there was a deep fill. So my question to add to Hunter's, when we were looking at it as this community plan, was the fact that it was fill considered in what could come on, what could be put there eventually.
Yes, Hunter. Planning commissioner goes back to, I think, 1999, when we first started planning work with the community, and that was the Dickerson Road corridor, and looking at the direction they wanted to take and change. And then the East Nashville Community Plan was updated in 2005, 2006. But since then, I've kept in close contact with the Dickerson Road merchants in various communities along there. And they feel that that policy is the direction to go, and that this site, over time, could conform to some aspect of the neighborhood urban policy. So it was looked at in detail.
Thank you. That's all.
Judy?
Thank you. I'm well aware of the investment that has been made to revitalize this community. I know that there are a lot of folk out there who could have spoke tonight but didn't, who are against this. If you could just stand and let us see who you are quietly. Thank you. I know my colleagues are also grateful that you all didn't line up to come and speak because by right you could have. So we thank you for that. But in seeing the investment that the community has made out here and understanding the history of this whole area and what the hope and dream is for this area, you know, at first blush, when you first look at it, you think, do you want, what are they called, trailers, the things on the back of the trucks?
Tractor.
Tractor, trailer things in and out? Or do you want, I guess they would be bringing junked cars, wrecked cars, in and out? Then the clients coming in and out, working and pulling on that. You know, the community, I think, has invested in this community plan, know what they want, know what their hopes and dreams are. And I think that as the commission, we just honor and respect the work that they have done and continue to do, and the investment that they continue to have in their neighborhood and where they're choosing to live. So with that said, are you all coming back to comments? Or you want me to make a motion?
I don't think that's...
Okay.
You finished, Judy?
Yes, I was prepared to make a motion, but thank you.
I guess I just have one question to get the zoning right in my head. Is, how long has the site been IWD? Do you know, the historical? Or has it had a heavier use in the past?
I'm not sure. I've heard rumors that, I couldn't tell you. I'd have to get, research that. It's been IWD since I've been working here, seven years at least.
Okay. And then, I wasn't clear on the answer to the fill question.
I've heard, I mean, it's rumors, and I can't tell you whether what's been filled there. You know, the site has been filled. I mean, it's obvious when you drive along the interstate, some type of construction fill, something's been placed there, but I couldn't tell you where it came from or what it consists of.
Okay.
Do you fill, do you know?
I mean, it's probably 40 to 50 feet on the interstate side, and it, you know, goes into nothing. But, you know, it was semi-controlled fill, but to build any kind of major structures or three or four-story apartments or residential would be very hard to do because of the foundations that you would have to do. You'd have to, you know, drill caissons or some other things and be very, very expensive.
Is it filled just on the front part near the interstate? Or is it across the whole site?
Just back, I was like, no. Just back from that part up there. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm also not clear on, there's another car facility next to here, another junkyard? Or a junkyard? I don't want to say another. Sorry. Where is that located? I'm not...
On this slide?
Yeah. Is it a metal scrapyard, or is it?
Yeah, there's actually, you could see, on a site visit, when you're pulling up on Lucas Lane, you can actually see the pile of debris from the Lucas property.
Yeah. And so what does the community plan call for, for the entire site?
For the entire site, including this junkyard or this salvage yard?
Yeah, yeah, the entire site. I mean, I understand that there's a community plan there.
Right. It's a larger neighborhood urban policy. It's what is in orange, which neighborhood urban is a mixture of uses, but it relies heavily on a variety of housing types and supportive businesses, commercial uses.
Well, I guess, you know, I always try to think of my own neighborhood and all the other neighborhoods in Nashville, and, you know, I understand the policy. So I guess my next question is, is the current salvage yard, is that a non-conforming use or is it zoned properly?
It's a non-conforming use.
Under the policy, under the plan?
Under the zoning.
Oh, under the zoning.
And it would be non-conforming under policy as well.
Okay. All right. I don't have any questions.
Hunter?
Well, I mean, I think it's a zoning issue that reminds us of, you know, where we're going to choose to put industrial as we work on our general plan, that we know we need industrial property in the county, and we need to make allowances for it. We have to choose where we want it. And I think this neighborhood plan says they don't want industrial there, they don't want more, they want it to begin to change as rezoning happens. And the awkward part for this site, to me, is if it's a fill, just what could we put on it logistically, literally? I mean, is one day, in order to fit into a residential area, going to be a park? For the landowner, how do they get to get the best use out of their property? I think the other thing that it flags to me is that we need to market to our plans better so that the landowners get to have the highest and best use that we're all hoping for, that we market to them, in order to establish this new version that we want, which I don't think, it doesn't sound like it's been happening quite yet. This is a hard one, because it's a, it's, the physical nature of the site is awkward to me. I think the one in Chattanooga for LKQ was built on a brown field, and I know brown fields can be remedied. I don't think this is a brown field, I think it's just a fill. But I think the overall neighborhood plan notion is something that is clear, and we need to find a site for an LKQ in the community that is appropriate, because I think it sounds like it's a good business. It's recycling, you know, it's about our sustainability issues that we want. It's somebody doing a clean environment, and that's sort of a business we want to welcome to this town. So I think it's something that we need to figure out a good location for them for.
Yes. I'd like to say that my thoughts about what's there now, what the plan says, and industrial zoning are not meant to be negative to this particular use happening somewhere. It is just the conceptual idea that you can always use for what it's zoned for, and it is industrial. It is part of the industrial base now, because the zoning did not get changed when the plan did. We don't do that to property owners. But if you are going to change the plan, change the use to a more intense industrial use, then that's when the plan comes into account. So I agree fully that one of our big problems, and a lot of groups don't want to hear this, but a lot of, one of our problems in the county is having enough industrial zoning. And I don't think we're opposed to that on this commission, to having appropriate industrial zoning. This is currently industrially zoned. So my thought is not anti this company, anti the people who've spoken on behalf of it, but just as a matter of what we, as a planning commission, have been about, to go through the process we did and then see people invest, knowing which direction was going, as opposed to trying to bring an IG themselves. They instead, Nets Door, have invested. So with all of that, I think, I think there are no bad guys in this. It's just that, from our standpoint, it's planning, a planning body, that we can't approve it, and if you're ready for a motion.
If you give me a motion on 5A, we'll vote on the separate.
I move, adopt staff recommendation and deny 5A.
You're a second?
Second.
Motion second to go with staff recommendation of disapproval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for 5B?
I'd make the same motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion second to approve staff recommendations on item 5B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And if you would set the timer for 10 minutes, we're going to take a 10-minute break, but I want all commissioners back here. A lot of times a 10-minute break, it could be 20, 25 minutes.
Loveless Cafe, which is just to the northwest, Natchez Trace, which is to the west, Pasco Church of Christ, which is at the opposite intersection, and Trace Side, which is the closest residential development to the proposed site. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This is a photo of the, the next couple are some images of the site. The site contains a large hill. It's, the highest point is near the Trace Side, and it slopes down towards Highway 100 and Pasco Road. This is another portion of the site. Most of the site is currently heavily wooded. Near Union Bridge Road and Pasco, there is the open area, which you see here. This site, this slide identifies steep slopes as specified by the zoning code. Slopes in red are 25% and steeper and should be avoided. While the property is made up of a hillside, it does not contain any large areas of steep slopes as defined by Metro standards. The existing zoning is single-family residential, RS40. Under the zoning, 16 single-family lots would be permitted. The proposed zoning is specific plan mixed use, or mixed residential, sorry, which is for a nursing home assisted living facility, as well as multifamily residential. The site is in the Bellevue Community Plan. Suburban neighborhood evolving and special policy applied to the property. It is important to note that the policies were just recently updated with the Bellevue Community Plan update, which was approved by the planning commission in January of this year. The suburban neighborhood evolving policy generally supports residential development that is suburban in nature. The policy recognizes the shortage of easily developable land due to environmental constraints, and so it supports higher densities than you would find typically in a classic suburban neighborhood. The policy also supports a wider range of housing choice than the typical single-family home on a single lot. A special policy that covers a larger area in this, in the Bellevue area, also applies to this site. The policy discourages, excuse me, development on environmentally sensitive features such as steep hillsides and floodways. The policy recognizes the rural character of the area and destinations such as Loveless Cafe and Natchez Trace Parkway, and supports development that is sensitive to this character and nearby destinations. The policy recognizes the Pasco Church of Christ, which is classified as a worthy of conservation, and supports development that would not negatively impact the site. Finally, the policy calls for strong pedestrian connectivity, which includes a connection between the Warner Parks and the Natchez Trace Parkway. This is the proposed site plan. Note that north is oriented to the left of the screen. It consists of two distinct development areas. The first area to be discussed is the nursing home assisted living facility. The area is located at the northern end of the site, adjacent to Highway 100, and is outlined in yellow. It is important to note that a nursing home is considered a housing option under the land use policy. The proposed maximum floor area for the nursing home is a little over 181,000 square feet. The development, the development area will sit above Highway 100. The plan will require significant grading. The hill will be cut into requiring retaining walls along the back of the site. Trace Side will sit above the wall. While there is significant grading will be required, the buildings have been designed in a way to minimize grading. Grading has also been minimized in areas containing the most significant slopes along Highway 100. The maximum height is three stories. The tallest building is located in an area where it will sit the furthest below Trace Side, as the site becomes more level, with Trace Side building heights are reduced to one story. Surface parking is proposed and consists of, is consistent with Metro requirements. Access is proposed from Highway 100 and Pasco Road, circled in red. Existing trees, existing tree area along Highway 100 and Pasco Road, outlined in red, are being maintained in order to buffer development from Highway 100 and Pasco Church of Christ. Supplemental landscaping is proposed in areas where grading is required. The second development area is the residential area, which consists of 28 townhomes and is outlined in yellow. It is located at the south end of the site along Pasco and Union Bridge Road. Access is proposed from Pasco Road, and it's circled in red. As proposed, the plan does not provide, does not provide any, a pedestrian connection between the two development areas. And that's, say, from the townhomes to the nursing home, there's no direct connection. Staff has discussed this with the applicant, and the applicant has agreed that we can work through these issues, and it's part of a condition that we continue to work with them prior to final site plan approval. We will have that figured out and hopefully have a better connection. The plan also provides conceptual elevations for buildings and some design guidelines. This slide shows building examples for the nursing home facility, and this is a, examples of the townhomes. There's also a TIS that was done for this site. I'm not going to get into the details of it, but the main point is that a red light will be required at some point at the intersection of Pasco Road and Highway 100. Left and right turn lanes on Pasco, onto 100 will be required, as well as a left turn lane onto Pasco, and, as well as a three-lane cross-section along portions of Highway 100. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval as, with conditions, including public works conditions, which you should have at your desk for traffic impact study, and their final recommendation and comments. As the request is consistent with the land use policy, it provides additional housing options in the area, provides adequate buffering to Highway 100 and Pasco Church, as called for in the special policy, and limits disturbance on areas with the steepest slopes. Staff is recommending disapproval without all staff conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Adams, open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and you can keep two minutes of those back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for two minutes for rebuttal. My name is Tom White. I represent the applicant in this matter. Start by, at the outset, thanking Councilman Bo Mitchell. You heard him earlier on this specific matter. You couldn't have heard any laudatory comments about an applicant, builder, developer, trying to seek the input from a community. In this particular case, the staff also had significant involvement. We're very appreciative of that as well. I think one thing that drives this as clear as anything else is the overriding debate that this commission just had on item number five, and that was a comment, what about the community plan? This is not only consistent with the community plan, but it was consistent with the community plan that just got evolved over the last few months. It's an example of an applicant getting in there and processing it exactly as it came through the system, the very item that was mentioned by this commissioner on the last issue. I'll mention to you that there were six, basically, global neighborhood meetings on this matter. There were a number of individual meetings with persons throughout this. But as importantly, there were three presentations and inclusions of my client when the staff met on the Bellevue Community Plan. They were there, they made their ideas known, they addressed them, they had answered questions afterwards. It's why I think it was so universally recommended. Now, again, you're never going to have unanimity. We don't have unanimity on this, but I think it's very clear from the councilman's contacts, who's kind of the litmus test about what the receptivity was, was extremely good. The applicant in this case is NHC. This is a $40 million investment on this piece of property. They employ more than 200 people, good quality jobs. It's the type of thing, as the mayor said, we're open for business here. This is the type of business that we want and need. Thank you for your courtesy.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Campbell. I'm Director of Development for National Healthcare Corporation, and we are the developer of Stevens Village East. NHC is a senior living company headquartered just down the road in Murfreesboro. You can find out more about us, if you want, by looking us up on the American Stock Exchange. We're really excited about this opportunity to be part of Stevens Village and to bring a senior living community to serve the elderly in Bellevue and the surrounding areas. This location will allow us to draw not only from Bellevue, but also West Nashville, and business from Williamson County. NHC's long-term vision for this property is to create and provide a continuum of care for senior living, including 28 age-targeted attached cottages for empty nesters who are either nearing retirement or post-retirement. 150 skilled nursing beds, 80 assisted living units, and 20 memory care units. We have four of these communities developed and are operating successfully, and two of those communities that you may know about are Richland Place, off of the West End in Nashville, and along Cool Springs Boulevard in Franklin, Tennessee. Not only will we be serving Bellevue's elderly, but as Tom told you, we're intending to make a $40 million investment in Nashville, bring over 200 jobs, which produces a recurring payroll of $10 million annually, and will add approximately $350,000 a year in property taxes to your tax rolls. We've done our homework and know the market exists for this development. The State Healthcare Agency last reported a bed need of 400... Well, first off, we're planning on building a residential-like structure, which is an example as shown above. Our occupancy is residential and healthcare in nature. We're quiet. Believe me, the lights will be out in most of the building after eight. And we have a low impact on the community. Our facility will not add to your school systems load. We're a low-traffic generator and we're not a burden on police or fire. In closing, I'll just say that we're very excited about being part of a well-planned village and love all the excitement created by the Loveless Cafe and other businesses along Highway 100. We firmly believe that our community will be a positive addition to this corridor and provide an essential service to what is currently a large market of seniors that's just going to grow in the future. Thank you.
Randy?
Thank you. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith were the engineers on the project. I'm so thankful Jason did a great job because I've got a minute and a half to cover four minutes worth of work here. But anyways, again, the two things we heard going through the process is we really need to be responsive to trace side and Highway 100. And we really organized the buildings, used building height, used topography to accomplish that. As Jason said, I'm going to go to some cross-sections using the building heights. We transitioned from one story down to three-story, moving the building away from the community. As you start seeing in these slides, as the building heights get larger, the building starts to sink lower beneath trace side. There's actually preserved open space behind them that was incorporated as part of the master plan purposely in anticipation of future development. I know because I designed trace side long, long ago. Again, these are, Highway 100, again, important how we approached that. We wanted to maintain as much tree preservation area as we could. We predominantly included that where the two and three-story component was, again, to soften, soften that, bring the height down on, on the site. Open space, over 53% of the site is, is in open space on, on the property. The main thing we heard was from the attached cottage unit series. We made some concessions about moving the building back 30 foot, as, as the councilman said. We would like that to be added as a condition of approval to make sure we keep our word to the community. Traffic improvements, $1.2 million worth of traffic improvements associated with this development. And basically, just to wrap it up, we're part of a bigger vision here. This shows the east that was on the consent agenda previously. This is why NHC wants to be here because of the Bellevue community, because of what the vision is for this property, because of the Loveless and because of the trace. With that, I want to reserve the rest of the time for our rebuttal. Thank you.
You've got a minute 44 left for rebuttal. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
I have slides. I'm from trace side. Yeah. While the slides are coming up, hello, thanks for this opportunity. My name is Akos Liedecy. I represent trace side here. Trace side is directly adjacent to this plan. It's about a subdivision of 400 houses or so. And can you get, come.
Are you in support of this?
In support with conditions, additional conditions. Okay? And then, again, I'm representing trace side. Can you go to the next slide, please? So first of all, oh, excellent, thank you. First of all, sorry for the accent. I moved here 22 years ago. I haven't lost it. Looks like I won't lose it anyway. Okay. So first of all, what's the character of, of this neighborhood? We have only single-family residences and farmland. Basically, Natchez Trace is right next door. Here, trace side is the densest residential area currently with RS40 and RS20 zoning. Okay? Also, there are some commercial establishments along Highway 100. So overall, the community feels that NHC is okay, but we do have a little bit of a problem with the townhouse part of this development. Okay? So first of all, if you look at the map, we are talking about this little area there. Okay? And if you see, trace side is by far the densest development. Everything else is much less dense. And then obviously, we have this farmland, we have Natchez Trace, and basically nothing beyond brush and Natchez Trace and nothing to the south of this. Okay? So if you look at a few pictures, this is from trace side looking at Stevens Village East. And in the background, that hillside will be Stevens Village West. Okay? If you look at 45 degree to the left, again, you can see a single building there. 45 degree, you see Pasco Road, and again, no buildings inside. Okay? Again, this is from the corner of trace side and Stevens Village East, looking south, Pasco Road. There is a tiny bit of a roof over there. So basically, this is countryside. Now, moving down Pasco Road, looking back at trace side and this current plan, you can see hardly three buildings, and that's it. And now, we're going to have 28 units here.
Thank you, sir.
I have five minutes, right? I'm representing trace side.
Well.
I was told to have five minutes.
Let me explain. You didn't ask for five minutes.
I asked five minutes from Craig, right? And we agreed on email that, that I represent trace side.
Staff, do we have that request?
Yeah, I do believe that happened. I think there's just been a miscommunication that he spoke on the proponents instead of...
I asked for people that were in support.
I am in support. I represent trace side. I am in support of this development. Okay? But I am personally not, but trace side isn't, that's what I'm representing. So what, here is my suggestion, actually.
You can continue for three more minutes then.
Okay. So first of all, a side note on the value development plan. The developer was involved in accepting that plan. I personally, and many of my neighbors were not. We had no idea the value development plan will include specific plans for the land that is directly adjacent to our property. So I think we should have been receiving postcards and signs like now for the zoning. So we are not aware of that, so my input and our input wasn't involved in that. But anyway, so the density. As you heard, the current plan would allow 16 houses on the entire site, and now on one-third of the site, there will be 22, 28 units. So that's six times the density than what's allowed today. So my proposed change is to reduce this density. There are no multifamily homes within miles of this area while having something at this density. The original plan they presented to the community had 22 units, so I would like to reduce the density from 28 to 22 units. The second one, you saw the buffer around NHC is very significant, very nice. We would be happy if we get something like that between the townhomes and trace side. There is no, as you heard, they are working with us for sure. So from the original six-foot, they went to 20-foot, and now they are agreeing to a 30-feet buffer. That's great. I would like to have it in writing. And also, they also promised, they haven't mentioned this, that they will leave all mature trees that are between trace side and this townhouse part within 20 feet. Okay? And also have evergreens on the other side and specify that lights won't blind us on the trace side part. Okay? Traffic, traffic is a mess already, so our suggestion is to make Pasco Road a four-lane road between Sneed and Highway 100. Okay? They will need to make turning lanes in and out of the home, the townhome community and in and out of the back entrust to the NHC, so might as well make the entire road four-lane road. And also, people are already cutting through trace side, so we'd like to limit the speed limit there to 25 miles an hour and have speed bounds. People are speeding through our neighborhoods where our kids are biking and walking. Okay? NHC, as we said, generally we are fine, so as long as what they promised, as far as the adequate buffer is concerned, and again, lighting pointing away from trace side and not toward it, would be fine. So I have 30 more seconds, but, uh, thank you.
Would you ask the people that you spoke for to stand?
We're in trace side. I thought we were in construction.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the staff's recommendation for the applicant? In support of the applicant, as they had come forward. Ones in opposition, we'll call for later.
Okay. I'm Jane Chaffin, Janie Chaffin, and my husband and I own a wonderful landmark on Highway 100 called Chaffin's Bar and Dinner Theater. And we've been there for 45 years. We have seen a lot of changes in the 45 years. We used to be in the country. Now we are getting close to the city. But I do approve this wonderful development. My mother was in NHC in Cool Springs, and I love the place. I have two friends that have family members there now. I also am a member of Pasco Church of Christ, and my husband and I was married at that beautiful church. So this will be a wonderful asset to the community, and one day, this development will be a landmark in Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the recommendation of the staff?
Members of the planning commission. My name is Kathy Hill, and I have lived on Natchez Ben Road right off of Pasco for over 40 years. And I believe the proposed living facility and townhomes are a positive addition to our community, and I wholly support it and hope you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. And what else?
My name is Ron Anderson, and I drive past this twice a day, going to work and coming home. And actually, I have lived on Pasco Road since 1967. I've known Mr. Stevens since 1956, and I know him to be a, a great corporate citizen and a community leader. And I know that anything he wants to be involved with, he, he wants, you know, the right thing, and that's what I like about Mr. Stevens. He's a close friend of mine and certainly hope you'll support this. Mr. Stevens is not an absent landowner. He lives on Pasco Road, so he drives by it every day too. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
I'm Neil McDonald. I live at 620 Pasco Road, half a mile from the proposed development. And I see absolutely nothing but good about this for our community, our area out there. Lot of, of, of things that I'm, you know, heard people concerned about the traffic, and also I am concerned about the density. But they've already been covered, so I don't really need to do anything other than just say that I think this plan is something that I would love and this community needs to have, because we need to be able to get very proactive on what we're going to have, I guess, in our community moving forward. Because I plan on moving to that retirement home in another 25 years, and it's only half a mile, so I'd like to keep the neighborhood nice. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Did you stand while ago?
I'm in trace side, but I'm...
Pardon?
Yeah, no, I've got a different position. I'm not opposed to a nursing home in my backyard. I, I back up to that property. My problem is Bellevue in general, is there is not, the traffic is terrible. Highway 100 has supposed to be widened for the last 25 years. It needs to be widened to four lanes or five with a bike lane. I know that Highway 100 is a state road and it's not Metro's deal, but I'm opposed to citifying Bellevue while leaving infrastructure countrified. You put two-story condos there and whatever apartments across the street from Pasco, that's going to add to, to the school. That's not, older people are not going to move into two-story houses in hordes, like the one-story ones they were originally going to have. Traffic is terrible at rush hour now. Widening Highway 100 is going to make traffic a nightmare, and I can't imagine if you add hundreds or thousands more cars to that road, what it's going to be like to widen. It needs to be widened before anything is done. It needs sidewalks, it needs shoulders. Kids are walking to school in drainage ditches to get to Bellevue Middle right now in Bellevue. The, all the infrastructure out there is for a country area, not a place to support apartments, at least West Bellevue, and townhomes. I would really like to have this, no zoning changes done until the infrastructure is put in. Can we not put the cart behind the horse instead of the cart in front of the horse for once and get the infrastructure in for expanding it? Because I understand that, you know, Bellevue's going to grow and there's nothing we can do about it. I just wish that we would make it so it's not going to be the most horrible nightmare on the planet when Highway 100 hopefully eventually gets expanded. And I disagree with Mr. Mitchell saying just because Fairview's doing it doesn't mean Bellevue has to do it. Just, and Fairview's expanding and growing and putting cars on Highway 100, it makes it okay for us to do it too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Sledge, and my wife and I, Gail, have lived at 8316 Highway 100 for the past 19 years. Quite simply stated, like Mr. Clifton said, I'm with a rather simplistic, too. We don't want it, we don't need it, we don't like it. My house is directly across from their proposed driveway on Highway 100. It's 8320 and I'm 8316. If they put that driveway on Sneed, I'd be a lot happier, but they want, NHC wants a presence on Highway 100 so everybody can see them. My position is twofold. One's selfish, and the other one is safety. This morning at 6:15, I walked out in my front yard and looked across at a beautiful wooded area. Any given day, I could see flocks of turkeys, which by the way, will have to be transported to Dixon or somewhere, because there's a bunch of turkeys that live right there, and deer, and possums, even skunks. And it's, it's nice. It's really a nice community. So in the future, if this is approved, and I, I'm sure it will be, they're nice people, I'm sure it'll be approved. But in the future, when I walk out in my, my front yard, I'll be looking at concrete or asphalt drive, parking lot in a three-story building and house, you know, whatever type of lights they put in the parking lot. So yeah, that's selfish. Secondarily, I don't know that, and I'll ask this rhetorically, but I don't know that there's been a traffic study done. Anybody here, the Vans, it's the Smiths, myself, anybody left out through there on the other side of Highway 100 can tell you all kinds of stories about people running off into the yard, running into trees, bell boxes, the creek, you name it. So at least I think somebody ought to pull all the rec reports over the last three to five years. And I would respectfully suggest a traffic light at Pasco and a turning lane, it's just going to muck it up worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? When one speaker leaves a microphone, if the next one would be up there and save some time for the commissioners.
My name's Larry Vance, and I live directly across from where the entrance, proposed entrance would be. I bought the model home there back in the mid-1970s, so I've been there as long as anybody else around. And during that period, there have been numerous accidents right in front of my house, either on, in my yard, in my ditch, in the ditch right across the street. And I'd say 90% of accidents that have occurred between the Bar and Dinner Theater at Loveless have all happened in that particular area. And so my concern is, you know, you have these turning lanes, but you have these people sitting here lining up, just like ducks sitting in a row, and these construction trucks come down through there. It's a 50 mile an hour speed limit. They're barreling down through there, and it's a blind, the curve is, is kind of, you can see, it's actually kind of blind when you come around through there. These people are going to be hit, they're going to be sitting there, and not any way to dodge anything. And I'm afraid we're going to just create a, a real nightmare. We have a pretty bad one as it is, and it's going to only get worse with all the, the traffic. So that's, that is my total concern there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Start your time.
My name is Rick Shepherd, and I live directly across from Pasco Road. My, my entrance to my driveway actually makes a four-way with Pasco Road, so it's, it's very difficult right now to get out of my driveway. I, I'm not opposed to the nursing home. I think it's, I agree with some of the comments and the folks that were in support of it. I think it's a great addition. You know, every developer and every landowner has a right to develop his property within the zoning use, and a nursing home to me is probably the best use for that property the way it fits with the neighborhood. But I am concerned about the traffic. I've had several wrecks in my yard. The blind curve, as you pull out of my driveway, is very difficult. I've got two teenage kids. I tell them every time they leave the house, take your time when you're getting out so you make sure that you don't get hurt. So just, I haven't seen the traffic study. I'd like to see it, but that is a very dangerous intersection. So I just ask that as you're considering the approval of this, that you make sure you emphasize the traffic study and what's being done at that intersection. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Beth Reardon. I live behind the Loveless Cafe on Greenville Drive and exit out on West Haven, right near Pasco Road. And I agree with the, my fellow residents with the fact that Highway 100 is just a traffic mess, and this is only going to add more. Fundamentally, I'm not against the development. Change happens, I understand that. But I agree with the woman from trace side that says, you know, don't put the cart before the horse. This, Metro has done a lot of development along Highway 100 and has considerably increased traffic problems, and I think it's Metro's duty also to fix some of those traffic problems. You're making a lot of... Change happens, I understand that, but I agree with the woman from Trey Side that says, you know, "Don't put the cart before the horse." Metro has done a lot of development along Highway 100 and has considerably increased traffic problems, and I think it's Metro's duty also to fix some of those traffic problems. You're making a lot of revenue off sales tax, property tax, and business tax in this area, and the citizens don't get that benefit unless we see something other than additional traffic signals. Currently, between McCrory Lane and Temple Road, a one-and-a-half mile stretch, we have four traffic signals, and a fifth one is going to be added. That doesn't help traffic flow at all. It frustrates the residents and backs traffic up morning, noon, and night. So please, Metro, do a traffic study and do something about the traffic in Highway 100 along with the development. It would make the residents a lot happier. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, you've got, what was it, minute forty-four? Two full minutes in for rebuttal.
Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith &amp; Associates. We're the consulting engineers on the project. Want to address traffic, several things that were brought up. First of all, we worked with Public Works in conducting the traffic impact study. We have recommendations of $1.2 million to improve Highway 100 and Pasco. This will widen Highway 100, this will improve safety. The light at Pasco Road will keep those trucks that are going sixty-five miles an hour down to a lower speed limit, because they'll have to respect that light. The light will also prevent cars from going through Trey Side, because now we have a functioning intersection at Pasco and 100 instead of one that doesn't function properly. Those are improvements that will be made immediately. Also wanted to point out, this is a very low-traffic-generating use. These are people that will not be going to work at eight o'clock in the morning, not coming from work at five o'clock, not sending their kids to school. These are people that will be only on the off-peak hours, so when they do use this infrastructure, it's not going to be during the key times. So I wanted to point out that as well. From a safety standpoint, the traffic light, the widening of Highway 100, it'll be widened to add a left-hand turn lane to our proposed access. Our proposed access is located exactly seven hundred feet from Pasco's intersection and seven hundred feet from Trey Side's intersection. It maximizes site distance, and it's going to only make everything better in terms of traffic flow on Highway 100. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my closing comments are basically that every function of this plan evolved throughout the many neighborhood meetings which I referenced to you. That was in part why the councilman was so supportive. After basically every meeting, there was a regrouping, a retooling, a replanning that took into account the many comments that we heard. I said at the front end, we didn't have unanimity, we don't, but this plan continued to be responsive to the neighbors. Secondly, I want to clarify, my client agreed to every single condition every metro department asked for: public works, traffic and parking, everything that came and was suggested to us, we embodied and endorsed. Finally, as I commented at the front end, with respect to the Bellevue community plan, we got right in the middle of the Bellevue community plan and made sure that what we did was totally responsive in this evolving plan. We couldn't have been any more embraced in the community to seek their input. We embodied it, we referenced it. It's a great development, it's the quintessence of good planning. I'd ask that you approve it. Thank you for your courtesy.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
I think this is a fabulous plan, low impact on the area, and as all of us baby boomers continue to age, we're going to need more facilities like this, so I support it.
Derek?
I have another potential conflict, so I'll excuse myself.
Greg?
I, too, really like the plan and all of the, I do really appreciate the developers, you know, looking at the community, looking at the community plan, responding to comments by the citizens of the area, and appreciate taking a look at the infrastructure, especially the traffic. I urge not only that doing a traffic study and doing the improvements, but Highway 100 is also a state project, and I would urge the citizens to reach out to their state representative who can help you with that, to really come up with a comprehensive plan for the area, because we all know that the area is going to be developed more, and I just would urge the citizens to work with your councilman and your state representative in the area to help with easing the traffic.
Andre. Judy?
That was going to be my recommendation, they work with those folks, but let me just ask you this one thing. The driveway coming out onto Highway 100, someone mentioned something about a blind curve. Have we looked at the site, the site plan?
Someone from Public Works is here to speak to that. I mean, generally, you have to have clear site distance at the entrance, so...
Yeah.
But if there's something specific, then he'll go the answer better than I can.
Charles Hasty, Department of Public Works. Specifically, site distance, right now, I can't tell you it is or it isn't, but as a part of our conditions, we're going to put the burden on the design engineer to prove to us that it is there, and if it's not there, we won't approve it until he gets it.
Okay, thank you. The only other question I had, there was a, I thought I saw a comment in here about the staff was concerned, there was no, that the internal sidewalks did not connect the two?
Correct. This is associated, let me see, there was a slide, this project is associated with the one that was on the consent agenda, and we have a slide that shows both of them, if I can ever get to it. Sorry about this. Let me just give you a better exam idea of what we're talking about. So there's both of the projects. Currently, if someone wanted to walk from the townhomes here, they would have to walk across the street, walk this way, walk back across the street. So we've talked to the applicants about this concern, that, you know, there should be some connection here, and they agreed, and so we will work with them prior to final site plan approval. We'll make sure that we get some type of connection.
You know, and I'm not concerned about the connection. Why would we want folk from the townhouse to walk or ride bicycles?
I guess my thought, well, this is going to be part of a larger, I mean, the thing to think about this is that there's a lot of land south of here in Longeston County that is going to develop. This is going to be a much larger development in the future. So if we're putting an urban village in this, or, I'm sorry, a rural village in this area, people need to be able to walk and get there.
I was just thinking about the residents who would live in NHC, if they're out strolling, elderly, would you want?
And I guess the other thing is, if I lived here and my mother lived here, I'd like to be able to walk directly there and not have to walk across the street.
Yeah, but, anyway, that wasn't a concern. I thought I saw it in here somewhere, so. Now, is that one, is that a condition that you have on here?
Yes, we just have a condition that they work with us to make sure that there is, that pedestrian connectivity is improved prior to us approving the final site plan.
Okay. Those were the only two comments I have. Thank you.
Hunter?
No addition.
Stuart?
Well, Bellevue has certainly been an interesting study in a developing area, and I don't blame anyone for worrying about the citifying without the attendant infrastructure. It's happened before, and it's happening out there now because of the 100 situation. So I don't blame them for that. And while we're not going to, as a city, using city funds, widen 100 all the way in, I did look at some of these specific traffic recommendations and conditions, and I don't know, I don't really know what else could have been done with this project. I know the answer from some of the residents would be, well, then, don't do anything. That's not realistic, I think. And I don't know, I don't know if we need to go over more of these, but there's a significant amount. I don't remember what the dollar value was you spoke of, but in terms of widening at intersections and traffic lights, this is going to be not worse but better. I know sometimes we think, you know, like I'm parting, there's just too many lights. Well, that's not the situation. I think it's been well-designed, the conditions that have been developed by Public Works and what we know they'll hold them to have satisfied me that this is a very good use of the area. All that about a home for elderly folks is true. If you really wanted an area that did not generate more, a lot more traffic, this is what you would do. So I think a lot of good work has gone into it, and I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation.
We have a motion.
So move. I move we approve staff recommendation.
Second. The motion second to approve staff recommendations. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, we have two proposed dates for our retreat, which will be, the mayor can meet with us on either August the 11th or August the 18th. Some of the commissioners have expressed the 18th serves better for them, if you would look at your calendars.
August 11th or 18th?
Yes, Saturday, 11th or 18th. You'll be here at the Howard School. The reason that, instead of going out to Chevy Bottoms or someplace we've done before in the past, the mayor will be here, and I'd like to get a picture with the commissioners on the roof of the Howard School, looking back towards Soul Grove and the convention center. I think it'd be appropriate. We're shooting for, the first choice is August 18th. How many can, that works for?
I'm out of town. I'm out of town.
You in on 18?
I'm in on 18.
Greg, you're in on the 18?
Saturday. You don't need my picture, anyway.
On the 18?
I'm in on the 18.
Okay, Derek?
I think I'm in on the 18.
You're out.
I'm out.
Okay, we've got one out. Well, then, I think we should do it then. He came last year in his running outfit.
I know, I haven't gotten over it.
I didn't have my picture taken.
Are you available on 18?
I can do the 18. Either one works.
Judy?
Early morning, 18.
Okay.
It goes all morning.
We'll start, the sun comes up about 5:30, so we'll... Okay, if there's no opposition, Jeff, we'll go with the 18.
You don't need my picture. I missed it last year.
Okay. Let's see, historic, Hunter?
Just in order to wrestle with the attached duplex in the historic neighborhoods, that I guess the council bill's going, maybe moving forward or going to be deferred or not. We, I guess, at the last meeting approved, recommended the council, but it's about, that's the highlight.
What, exactly what is in that bill? What does that do?
Well, the, do you want to, you know the bill well?
I can, I can talk about it a little bit. It's a bill that's going to allow for there to be detached duplexes in historic overlay districts. The way the law is currently written, it, there's an exception for the definition of duplexes in terms of, you can't have that now. And so what this bill is going to do is going to take out that language so that it won't apply in historic overlay districts and that you can have detached duplexes in those districts. The bill is, Commissioner G. is correct, the bill is going to be, or has been actually deferred, just to make a minor modification to the bill itself. In other words, the language that's going to be used is not going to just take it out, but it's also going to say that specifically, this will not apply in historic overlay districts. So that's the change that's in the works.
And as I understand it, I certainly don't want to go on record to be an expert in this subject necessarily, but as I understand it, it'll address certain issues that we've had in our historic districts, such as sort of monster duplexes being built that are really out of the character and scale of the historic neighborhoods, as well as a term that is somewhat new to me, these umbilical duplexes, which our zoning ordinance requires duplexes to be attached by at least eight feet of conditioned space or something like that. And so you end up with these sort of single-family homes essentially that have this appendage that connects them and which isn't very consistent with the historic character either. So some, those types of things are trying to address with this.
These would allow these side by side, and also on the alley, a mother-in-law type apartment type?
I'm not sure of the specifics. I think as long as it meets the, well, the design guidelines within that district and the setbacks for the zoning, the configuration would be up in the air, I guess.
Thank you. Anything, executive committee, there is no executive committee report, but the executive from Rick?
We got an upcoming Antioch Priest Lake community meeting on the plan next Tuesday, the 26th, Lake Shore Christian Church, and we're going to be reviewing the first draft of the community character policies with the communities. We continue to post web videos of that Antioch plan on the website, to put a new one up today, try to take a look and get an idea of what they're doing. We've also got a redesign of the Development Services webpage coming out. It's complete, and it's going to go public in connection with the mayor's new economic development webpage, and we're expecting those to be rolled out within the next week or so. You've got an upcoming training session, I know you're pleased, on June 27th, that's your regular three o'clock in the afternoon webinar. This is on planning law that's been created in 2012, important decisions that may affect the way regulation is interpreted or new regulation is written, and what constraints may be on the city as a result of...
Do you have the dates on that, Ann?
Yeah, it's June 27th, three o'clock, in the Howard Office, excuse me, the Metro Office Building Conference Room, one of the large conference rooms.
Gail's office?
Yeah, the second floor of Metro Office Building, in our office area. And just a reminder, you've got, of course, a planning commission meeting coming up in two weeks, but that, after that, you will not be meeting again until July 26th. You just have one planning commission meeting in July, and that's your second meeting. So enjoy your Fourth of July holiday.
Judy?
That's it.
Chairman?
Yes.
I want to ask kind of a question, and also want to actually tell you about a meeting that is in July. What's the report card that we were talking about?
Yeah, I was going to say something.
Isn't that the 27th?
The 27th is a Wednesday, and...
So that's not a pre-planning commission workshop?
No, 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 that is just one of the training sessions that we provide for staff and commissioners, so you can be working on your state training requirements.
Four-hour?
What time? What's the time? Three o'clock.
But what's the report?
The morning of June 27th, the Urban Land Institute is presenting their National Annual Study on Infrastructure. So there will be a ULI fellow that comes in and makes that presentation. Likewise, ULI locally has been working on a Nashville Infrastructure Report Card, and so we're going to be revealing the drafts of that day as well. So I think that answers.
Do you know when that, when the report card's going?
Well, it's all part of the same program. First thing in the, it's a breakfast program on the 27th, and you can sign up for it at uli.org.
Then there's the 28th of July or 23th of the work session?
It's the 26th.
26th of July, oh, before the commission meeting.
Yes, you're going to have a work session before your meeting on the 26th of July. It's going to be at, start at 2:30 in the afternoon before your regular planning commission meeting. It will be in this room, and we're allowing about an hour and a quarter, hour and thirty minutes for the commission to sort of get an update on the major collector's street plan, now that that's been in effect for a while, what's working well, what's not, what kind of refinements might need to be made. So, and that was commissioner's request, I believe.
Can we get credit for it, he's asking?
No.
No, it's a report from staff to tell us, you know, what the...
It sounds like continuing education.
Mister? I think we, you all will have to work, you can't just... Mr. Chairman, I did let the staff know that I will be out of town on July the 26th, so please excuse me from the work session as well as the regularly scheduled meeting.
And I, too, will be out, so Hunter will be, I'm not... And I, too, will be out, so Hunter will be, I'm not Hunter, excuse me, Stuart will be the chair.
So it's two of us out.
We need, we need everybody else there, though.
Yeah. Everybody come support him.
Sorry, I just have, I just have one other announcement that I figured the commissioners would be interested in. If you haven't seen already, the Nashville Civic Design Center has put out a call for entries on an international design competition for the East Bank between the river and the interstate. It's sort of an ideas competition, not, you know, so I think those will be due later this summer, the end of the summer, and winners will be announced shortly thereafter.
Any other announcements, comments? We go stand adjourned.